Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Five seconds. Whenever you're ready, you can start your meeting.
Okay, good evening folks and thanks for joining us. I'd like to welcome you to the Town Council Meeting for Thursday, August 27th. Postponed from the August 20th meeting. We apologize for the delays and appreciate everybody's patience in figuring out how to get these things going together. We're coming to you on Zoom tonight because we're doing this virtually. We wanted Paul McCally to be able to join us from his vacation down in lovely South Carolina. And the only way for him to really effectively do that and be able to share screens if necessary or any of that was to be able to do that through Zoom. There's also been some various different concerns about COVID and other illnesses. And we wanted to just make sure that at least this time, we tried to be as safe and secure as we could. Eileen's not going to be able to join us tonight. She is recovering from some sickness and we wish her the best in doing that. So with that, I would like to call the meeting to order. Again, it is a Zoom meeting, so, or a virtual meeting. So if people need to be able to dial in, they can listen and participate via phone at 929-205-6099 with meeting IDs. And we are broadcasting on the Merrimack TV Channel 20 or Merrimack TV Facebook Live page, which is http://www.facebook.com/merrimacktv. You'll be able to follow along there. Want to participate in the public meeting? Please be aware, there is a slight delay in the timing between our live timing and the show on Facebook. So you need to be actively ready to dial in if you're going to call in during the public participation. Hopefully you had a chance, if you needed to, to submit public comments, but I haven't seen any come in to TC Public Comments@MerrimackNH.gov. And with that, we'll move forward if there are no other questions. What I'd like to do is go through a roll call before we get started. Hang on a minute. Sorry. Didn't know whether my phone had disconnected on me or not, I just got a beep. Like to do a roll call before we get started and just make sure we follow as much of the rules as we can. So I'll go through and ask each of you to identify where you're at, why you're not at the meeting in public, and whether or not you can hear all of the proceedings that are going on. So I'll start out, my name's Tom Koenig, I'm at home right now. My wife and child are in the house with me, but they're not with me down here in my office. And I can hear the participation that's going on. Nancy?
Good evening, I'm Counselor Nancy Harrington. I'm present in my Merrimack home with my husband who's in the other room, but I'm in my home. I'm in my room alone. I do understand this is a virtual meeting related to the pandemic and I can hear you well.
Thank you. Bill Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Counselor Bill Boyd. I'm coming to you from my home at 139 Joppa Road. My wife is downstairs, I'm upstairs in the office alone. I have access to my Town Council materials and I can view and listen to the conversations that are going on currently. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Finley Rothhouse?
Finley Rothhouse, I'm sitting at my home in 14 Kidridge Lane. Currently alone, home alone, a little scary, but I can hear everything and everybody clearly, I can see everybody clearly. And I'm here because Paul McCally wanted to join our meeting.
Or because of COVID-19 and pandemic concerns. Lon Woods? Thank you, Finley.
Yes, I'm Counselor Woods, participating in the meeting from 2 Arbor Street, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I can see everyone, I'm audio available and audio capable and anxious to get the meeting finished.
Me too. Peter?
This is Counselor Peter Albert. I'm broadcasting from my home in Merrimack, New Hampshire. My wife is present in the house. I'm here doing this due to COVID-19, I can see and hear you all.
Thank you, Peter. And Barbara?
Hi, this is Counselor Barbara Healy and I am in my home office alone, except for the dogs. And my husband's in another part of the house, but he cannot hear or see what I'm talking about here. Anyways, we're here due to COVID and I'm glad to see that most everybody is well.
Absolutely, thank you. Paul McCally, you want to just give us an audio check?
Hi, Paul McCally, Assistant Town Manager Finance Director for the Town of Merrimack. I'm here in lovely South Carolina, Myrtle Beach area, North Myrtle Beach. I can hear you, I have my phone to look at all the materials as we have it. I appreciate you guys doing this for me due to COVID-related issues and look forward to having the meeting begin.
Okay. With that, the next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe we'll have a flag presented on the screen while we go through the pledge, so if you would join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Announcements? You know, I think I had some announcements sent to me and I proceeded to immediately lose them in all the email that I've been getting today. So if you'll hang on with me for a second. Paul, do you have any announcements for today?
Yes, I have an announcement if you'd like me to go while you look for yours.
Yeah, please.
All right, it's about the library. After Labor Day, the library building will be open to the public three days a week for services with limited building capacity. Masks will be required, virtual programming, curbside pickup, and outside services will continue. For more details, please visit the library's website. Thank you.
All right, taking word a minute to open up here. Come on, no, don't do that to me. Something changed in my computer and every time I get a document over the internet, it comes in blocked. So I have to save it and then unblock it. So if you give me just a second, and if I had thought about that in advance, I could have done it. I knew that wasn't going to work. Sorry about the dead air, somebody want to say something so that it doesn't sound so quiet for a minute?
I had the occasion to talk to Tom Minkon on Tuesday. He's doing well. He's having a lot of fun with his grandkids. He is enjoying watching the Westbrook City Council on a regular basis. However, he is fulminating over the fact that he does not have a full ham radio antenna on his property. For him to have the antenna of his desirability, he needs another 20 feet and he can't get it. So as opposed to bouncing X number of calls, he's been reduced to the letter Y. But he did sign up with the local ham radio club there as well. And the crew that is involved with ham radio in his community is a little bit more of a younger generation according to Tom. But he's doing fine and he wanted to be remembered to everybody.
Okay, thank you. So I apologize for the delay. By way of announcements, the state primary election will be held on Tuesday, September 8th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at your designated polling location. All voters are eligible for absentee voting due to COVID-19. For more information, please visit the town's website. Upcoming Town Council Meetings, Thursday, September 10th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. as a regular meeting. All of these are regular. Thursday, September 24th at 7:00 p.m., Thursday, October 8th, and Thursday, October 22nd. You'll notice that we're coming out of our summer break and having our less meetings during the summertime. Although we didn't have less this summer because of various assorted issues that came up. But I'm sure we all enjoyed our summer break anyway, right? Okay. That's all I have for announcements. Paul, you went through your announcements, so that brings us to comments from the press and public. At this time, if you wanted to make a comment, please dial in. And the information should be on the screen if you're watching. And hit star nine to be placed in the queue. When it's your turn to speak, I will recognize you by unmuting your phone and calling out the last few numbers of your phone number. So if there's anybody wanting to make a comment at this point, please hit star nine on your phone or whatever is giving you access to the phone. I have two numbers in here, but I don't have anybody raising a hand yet. So assuming there's a delay and you're watching on Facebook, we'll give you another few seconds or half a minute or whatever to be able to dial in to hit star nine on your phone. There should be information on the screen for what you need to dial into and what your access codes are, et cetera, et cetera. If you're having problems, you can send an email to TCPublicComments@MerrimackNH.gov and we will attempt to get to those later on in the meeting to understand what is going on. Still haven't seen anybody raise their hand to star nine. So at this point, I'm going to move on from public comments to recognitions, resignations, and retirements. We have several that we postponed, but there are a couple that we wanted to at least talk about today. Town Council is planning to present an award to Master Firefighter Paramedic William Pellren in recognition of his retirement after more than 18 years of full-time service with the Town of Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department. Bill retired on March 28th of 2020 and he will be rewarded with a plaque. He was unable to attend virtually or in person because he's moving on with his life and we wish him the best and wanted to thank him for that. So we want to take this point to recognize him and realize that he is retired. Our second recognition for tonight is the Town Council presented an award to Captain Brian Dubreau in recognition of his retirement after more than 25 years of full-time service with the Town of Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department. Brian retired on March 19th of 2020 and he will also be awarded with a plaque. He also was unable to attend and didn't think he would be able to attend a future meeting. So we wanted to take this moment to recognize and thank them for their service and let them know that we'll get a plaque to them if we haven't already. Any other comments or questions from the council so far? Peter?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Bill and Brian. I spent many years of my career when we worked fire issues with the Fire Department with Brian and a true professional, a great guy. Merrimack Fire is going to miss him, I'm sure they'll bring in some other good people, but Brian is just outstanding guy. I wish him luck in his future endeavors.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Lon.
My congratulations to both. They've done for the town, they've done, and I wish them well.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, I got a comment from Lee St. Laurent saying that she tried to call in, but she couldn't see anywhere to raise her hand. Lee, you would have done that by hitting star nine on your phone to raise your hand. If you're still dialed in, we could try to reach out to you, but I don't see a phone number for you that's currently online to the system. So if you want to dial in real quickly, we can go back and try to pick that up.
Tom?
Yes?
Leah's trying to figure out how to get into the meeting.
Okay, so she can dial the phone number, 929-205-6099? Pardon?
A minute, I'm responding to her. What's the phone number?
The meeting ID is 944-4645-7917.
Okay. I think she was looking for a Zoom.
No, she needs to dial in from the...
I just sent that to her.
All right. So we'll keep an idea to see if she shows up. She'll be admitted into the room by Nicholas or somebody and then she can hit star nine on her phone to raise her hand to show that she'd like to talk, she'll be muted initially.
Hello?
Hi, how are you doing?
Hi, I'm good, I finally figured it out, so I'm here, this is Leah St. Laurent.
Hi, Lee, how are you? So you're live on our virtual call right now, if you want to go ahead.
Absolutely.
Hi, how are you doing?
I'm doing good, how are you? I'm going to turn off the mic here. Yeah, are you getting any feedback right now?
No, I'm good at the moment.
No, okay, good. Okay, so I'm just here just to, I just want to more understand of everything that's going on and I know that there are different things going on in the Courier Road neighborhood. One, the parking signs, you know, well kept falls, and then the stop signs. So understanding that right as of the last meeting, it's going to be Merrimack residents parking only on the right side of the streets. And that is April 15th to September 15th, correct?
I think it's May 15th to September 15th.
Oh, May, okay. Okay, so after that, it would be open to anybody?
Yeah, all we've done so far is restrict to Merrimack residents only during that time period. So outside of that time period, there's no restrictions for parking. And we haven't restricted to one side of the street yet either.
And that's what you're doing tonight, right? That's what you're discussing tonight?
Well, tonight we'll have further discussion on that tonight, yes.
And is there a public discussion later on after that discussion? Or is this the time to bring up any concerns?
This would be the time to bring up your concerns.
Okay. Okay, so as of right now, again, it's residence only on the right-hand side. And then I'm understanding that on the left-hand side, there's going to be no parking anytime.
Well, that's what's being discussed tonight, as to whether to do that.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, you know, what's being, right, what you're going to discuss. And do you know how many signs that is?
No, I think if we put all of that in with no parking on one side and residents only parking, it was something like 72 signs, but at the moment, we're sitting with 46 or something like that at the moment.
46, oh, okay.
Because we don't have the restricted parking on the other side, yet.
Right. And why are we restricting parking on the other side? Is it because of you're worried about safety? Safety, fire trucks and everything going down the other side of the street? Or being able to get down, is that why?
That was generally the concern, yes ma'am.
Okay. So if it's resident only, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this because if it's resident only on one side of the street, I'm not sure why we would need the no parking on the other side of the street. It seems to me if it's resident only, then shouldn't we put more faith in the Merrimack residents that they will be respectful and not park on both sides of the street? And I guess...
So let me interrupt you for a second. Resident only is for the neighborhood, it's not for one side or the other, it's for the neighborhood. There's two different issues here. One is resident only parking in the neighborhood, the other one is to restrict parking on one side of the street only.
But if you're only allowing Merrimack residents into the neighborhood, once the parking lot is full, I don't understand why there would be a need to put the no parking on the other side of the street.
Okay, well, that's a valid concern. There currently is no, not, there is, currently parking is allowed on both sides of the street.
Right.
And if the ordinance were to be changed to make it one side only, then that would be a different story.
Okay. Because my concern is about compromising the integrity of the neighborhood, and I've mentioned it before, placing all these, you know, all these signs in our neighborhood and putting restrictions, permanent restrictions on all the residents on these seven streets. And it's definitely going to affect the value and the look of the neighborhood with these many, many signs. And it was my understanding that the concern was the volume of cars coming down here and safety, personnel not being able to get their vehicles down here. But if we're not having out-of-town residents or out-of-state or whatever, it just, in my opinion, it just, I don't think it would be needed. And then my other concern is that, I know that Peter Albert had spoken, said that in a year or so, you know, if there's no issues, then we may not have a problem with this, you know, so we can always undo it. But my thoughts with that is, first of all, how could that be tested? You know, would you put covers over the signs to say, okay, let's try it, let's open it up again? It just seems to me like it's a permanent thing. And I truly believe that it will be permanent because the argument then would be, well, the people asked for help. Some of us in the neighborhood asked for help, some of us, you know, couldn't come up with another solution. But then they got what they wanted and we put so much time and energy and money into putting all these signs up and now they want them down. That's just, I'm afraid that that's where this is going to go. And again, being a Realtor, property values is just key to me. And also another fact, I've had some feedback from a few other people in the neighborhood and they've started to see some markings in the road from DigSafe and the Water Department. And they're like, what are these? You know, so we started having a talk and they're like, why have we not heard about this? And I know that has come up before and I agree, I've seen it on social media and it was a closed group, by the way, not a public forum. But a lot of our residents still do not know what's going on and what has already been passed and what's being discussed. I looked at the meeting from your last Town Council meeting and it looked like the parking issues that are being addressed on Hadley Road, not all of the residents were notified of that, of restrictions. So that topic was supposed to be, I think, postponed until this meeting after the residents could be notified. And I'm just curious as to why we weren't given that same consideration.
The Hadley Road, if I could, just a second. The Hadley Road situation, the counselor specifically requested because of how we were going to be modifying things there during school hours, you know, not resident only, not, I mean, none of those kind of things, but no parking period between like 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon or something like that. They felt it was important that we made sure that everybody in the street got notification because this would have, we feel, a heavier impact on them than what we're talking about in Courier Road. That particular item wasn't requested either by individuals or any counselors and so we didn't go through that effort. We went through the standard notification process for the Courier Road situation.
Okay, I understand that now. Okay, so I guess my just last concern, and I'll stop here, is that I'm beginning to understand or believe that the actions of the result of a pandemic are going to place what I believe are permanent restrictions on our properties without any formal notice. And the biggest part of the problem, the resident-only parking will only be in effect for a couple more weeks. What happens in three weeks when these signs are up and it's open to everybody? What happens then if we have a problem and we have out-of-state people coming in? Like we saw at Watson Park. Watson Park was out of control and I just, I fear it's still nice out and we're only three weeks away.
That's a really good question that we don't have an obvious answer for. The park is not open yet and so even if we were to put the signs up tomorrow, it wouldn't have any impact. We are hoping to be able to open the park, but there's been some suggestions that I've heard of waiting until after the 15th, after Labor Day at least. At which point, we think that general traffic will decrease no matter what, regardless of the pandemic. If that's not the case and we suddenly find ourselves overrun, I suspect we'll be right back where we're at right now and find ourselves closing the park because it's not under control.
Then why not have the... Yeah, go ahead. I'm just thinking, why go through all that if we don't know what's going to happen this spring? We're hoping that the pandemic is going to be over and then in the spring, we're not going to have this problem again. But if we do, could the signs go up then when we do see that this is an ongoing problem and not just because of this year?
That's a suggestion that's been made by other people as well and it's probably something that we should be discussing. And so I want to make sure everybody in the council understood that. She's suggesting that since the 15th is so close, only three weeks away and the park's not even open at this point, do we go to the expense and the trouble of setting the signs up today, having them go through the winter with those signs out there, serving no purpose because it's outside of the time period? And maybe just should just, we just delay setting up the signs until next April or May because they have no impact? Bill, do you want to say something to that?
The comment that I had, and I actually received communications from the St. Ammon family who live in the neighborhood, expressed similar concerns that Leah is talking about right now. I think it's, to be candid, I think it's something for us to consider. We've already made the decision that we would like to have that area be restricted from a certain period of time. We are coming up on September 15th. I don't think there's, I don't think it would be prudent probably to go ahead to set things up. At least in my opinion, I don't think it would be prudent to go ahead and set things up when they're not going to be enforceable within the next couple of weeks. Quite honestly, I think it presents a unique opportunity that maybe we could have some type of a neighborhood meeting in the interim or have some other type of an agenda item where we can invite the neighborhood to come to the council and maybe have a larger conversation as to make sure, first of all, make sure people have the appropriate notification as to what's going on. But also secondly, you know, address some of the concerns, both pros and cons, that people may have in the neighborhood. But sort of coming back, I think it's a legitimate thing for us to consider. September 15th is a couple of weeks away, do we want to begin the process or update until 2021? Thank you.
Okay. And I know normally in public participation, we don't get involved in a back-and-forth discussion, but it seemed appropriate at this point. Paul, can you give us a status on the sign situation?
Yeah, so right now, the signs want to, the sign maker to be made up. Kyle, we just approved the purchase order to have them in. The reason why DigSafe markings are... The reason why DigSafe markings are on the ground is because we're, if we're gonna put the post in, we're gonna put the post in and we need DigSafe to mark out water, sewer and all the utilities that are in the area. So, uh, not knowing exactly when the council was going to open the park and not open the park, we wanna be ready to go with our DPW department and get those, if we open it before the 15th of September, to get those signs ready to get put into the ground. So that's why we're, we're doing all our, our homework right now to get, get this thing ready to go in case the council decides to open it up before the 15th. If it's opened up after the 15th, of course, we're not gonna put up the signs right away after the 15th because, you know, snow and snowplows and all that good stuff that goes along with that. So that's where we are with those signs at this moment.
Okay. So Leah, does that answer your questions?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. And nobody else has dialed in that I'm aware of. Um, so we'll move along to our appointment with, uh, Len Christensen. So I've asked Len to join us to talk about the state primary election. She sent us a, a summary, um, but I thought that it would be important, given all of the concerns and issues, that we make it as public as possible and therefore bring it into this public meeting. So, um, Len, are you available?
I am here and I do appreciate you scheduling me because I agree with you. I think it's very important. Things are gonna be very, very different in September and in November. And getting the word out to the public as well as some of the other things that we're doing on the side is very important. Um, I'll launch right into it. Actually, I, I'd like to say first of all, um, we have mentioned in a number of places that a lot of our normal workers don't feel comfortable working at the polls anymore. And so we've been looking for some volunteers. Um, both Diane Trippett, town clerk, and I have received many offers from people and I wanna say I really appreciate them stepping up. Um, we're not gonna be able to use them all, probably very few of them at this point. But I really appreciate people making the effort to say, I'll come in and I'll help. Um, the biggest one we've got is masks. And I have to say, over the past probably six or seven weeks, I've been on at least one conference call, uh, sometimes two or three with the Secretary of State, the AG's office. They've been struggling, trying to figure out what we can do, what we can't do, what we should do, what we shouldn't do. Um, it, it's been a long process. A lot of moderators have been involved as well as town clerks on and supervisor checklist on other calls. A lot of back and forth, a lot of good ideas and we've picked up some things from each other that will help. On masks, um, they will be required in the polling site. If you're a voter, you wanna come in to vote, you need to wear a mask. If you wanna come in to register to vote, you need to wear a mask. If you're a town counselor coming into work, you need to wear a mask. If you're a party challenger that wants to observe, you need to wear a mask. Um, there's no exceptions. Masks are gonna be on everybody in the polling site. There's always gonna be a few either that can't for medical reasons and I would have hoped they would have done an absentee ballot if they had that issue, but it's possible. There are always some that are going to object to it just on principle. What we are doing is setting up a tent at the exit door, right beside the building. It will have a table, it will have a shield for a different reason, a Plexiglas shield for a different reason, and a voting screen. If somebody shows up at the door and they wanna vote and they will not wear a mask, they are sent around or will be sent around to that tent. Um, and this goes to part of what I'm hoping you guys will do. When they get to that tent, a moderator will come out. That tent is considered part of the polling location. It is within the guardrail. They will collect a photo ID, they will go back in, check the person on the checklist, just as we would normally do as if it were the person standing there, get the appropriate ballot with a privacy sheet, take it back out to the person sitting at the table at the voter screen and that voter can vote, mark their ballot just as they would any other time. When they're done, it goes inside the privacy screen and it gets handed back to the moderator. The moderator will bring it in and put it in the ballot box. If there's any doubt that you think they're not gonna do that, you can stand in the doorway. You can see the ballot box from the doorway. You can see that your ballot actually went into the box. So there are no quote unquote lost ballots that people are afraid are gonna happen. If somebody shows up at the door that needs to register, and again, they won't or can't wear a mask, they will also be sent around to that table. We will be notified and a supervisor of the checklist will go out and sit at that table behind the, the Plexiglas screen, will collect the appropriate documents from the vote, from the, uh, resident that wants to register and do the registration. Once the registration is complete, a moderator will come out, figure out which ballot they want, collect the card that they will be given that says they've registered to vote. They will be given a ballot. They will then sit down at the privacy, at the voter, the table screen. They will vote. That ballot will be given back to the moderator, which again will take it in and place it in the machine. That's a big change. I'm hoping that people will respect the need for masks. I know there's people out there that says it's hogwash, doesn't mean anything, you don't need them. I don't care what the science is. Everybody feels more comfortable if everybody's wearing a mask. And if you don't think you need it, that may be, but the person standing beside you thinks you need it. It's only common courtesy. Merrimack has been good for years about being courteous of each other, respecting each other. I'm hoping that the people in town will continue to do that. I've been very proud of them, whether it's town meeting or elections or what. So I'm hoping they will continue. Um, that's how it's gonna work. That comes to what I'm gonna have, ask you guys to do. I would like you to act as a greeter at the door and check for masks, explain to people what I've just explained to you and just send them around to the back. There are masks available if they want them and decide they don't wanna go through the hassle, they can put them on. If you get flack, come get one of us. We'll deal with it. But I just need somebody to monitor the door and watch for this. The other thing I'm gonna ask you to, to do at the door, which is, again, that's something new. If people are requesting an absentee ballot and they don't have time to return it via mail, there's all kinds of questions regarding how long it's gonna take the post office to get these to them. And you can't get down to town hall to deliver it to town hall, which is another process. You can bring it to the polls that day and deliver it to, it'll be either a town counselor or a staff person. We've got three staff people, one at each polling location. So there's a number of you that, so that you won't be stuck there all time. Um, deliver that absentee ballot to you and there will be a ballot box right there. It's the old wooden ones we used to use at town meeting, that you will place that in. If it's someone who is returning it themselves, just put it in the box. If it's someone who is returning it for, say, a caretaker or a spouse, um, there is a form that they need to fill out and they need to show an ID. That can be done. That's typical for what the town count, a town clerk does already. But we will be able to accept absentee ballots up until 5:00 PM on voting day. So that should mean that people aren't gonna get stuck and complain later that, well, I, I put it in the mail, but it didn't get there in time. You need to take some responsibility. You can take it to town hall. You can bring it to the election. You've got some options here. Um, on that note, the town clerk, I've talked to her, they have just set up a different process at town hall. So if you're requesting or returning an absentee ballot, instead of waiting in the line that is at the town clerk's windows, you can go beyond that line to the conference room where there will be supervisors of the checklist or assistants that can process an absentee ballot request or an absentee ballot. You need to unmute yourself, Paul.
I was just trying to get somebody's attention. Um, yes, so it's the memorial conference room. Uh, we, Diane set that up also, uh, then I don't know if, I don't wanna steal your thunder, but Diane is setting up, I believe, on, uh, the, uh, Labor Day itself. She'll be out in the parking lot for a couple hours, being able to accept those absentee ballots with Brenda is from what I understand as well. So there are plenty of opportunities for people to drop off those absentee ballots, uh, to town hall and other places.
Yep, you stole my thunder, but that's all right. We share. We, we have a history in Merrimack and I'm very proud of it, of doing everything that we can to make sure anybody that's eligible, that's entitled to, gets to vote. We've always done that. We will continue to do that. So that's another process with the absentee. Um, one other thing because of this, with the absentee ballots, right now, at least as of Monday, Diane had 1,500, over 1,500 absentee ballot requests that she's processing. She's receiving about 125 requests a day. This is a lot of work. Um, you can also, when you request your absentee ballot for the primary, you can also request it for the, the November election at the same time. So essentially this is 250 requests a day that they are processing. Um, that's gonna be a lot of ballots. We did a lot of them on, on town meeting. We're gonna do some more, um, on this election. To speed the process up at the polling location, we are going to be pre-processing absentee ballots. On September 3rd, so any of the political parties that are listening, pay attention. Any challenges, pay attention. On September 3rd at town hall, we will be taking all the absentee ballots that we have received. We will be opening the outer envelope only. We will be checking to make sure that the affidavit has been signed completely and that it's a legitimate, the same thing we would normally do on election day, but we're gonna do it ahead of time. We are gonna go to the checklist and we did this earlier and it's, it will help tremendously. The checklist will be highlighted with that name so that we know it's gonna be easier to find those names on election day. And the checklist will be marked, if it's an undeclared voter, the checklist will be marked with an R E P or a D E M as far as which ballot they took, saving us huge amount of time and effort on election day. But that's gonna be done on September 3rd. So anyone, parties or anyone else who wants to come in and, and challenge and say, no, that person doesn't live in town, they're not entitled to vote, that's the time when you get to do it. Because when you get to the polling site, you're not gonna have the opportunity to do it. So if you wanna do it, September 3rd, 10:00 AM, and we're gonna be doing it for a while, I believe, at town hall. Um, I've gotten a lot of my assistants, um, some of my, um, other, uh, people that have worked there are coming in to help us do this and I'm just pleased. All of these changes have been vetted by the Secretary of State's office and the AG's office. That's a lot of what these, uh, conference calls have been on as to what we can do. And it's taken them a while to figure out, based on RSAs, as well as based on emergency orders, based on some last minute changes of the legislature as to what we can do. So that's what's going on. Questions, guys?
Anybody have any questions? Sounds fairly thorough. Fennel, go ahead.
Actually, not what Len presented this evening. That was all good. I, I appreciate that update. Um, but I did want her to know that, uh, I had spoken to a school board member and there is a possibility if she's needing, uh, assistant moderators and so on, uh, checklist people and all of that, a student, uh, would have, likely have an opportunity to get a credit. They're called an extended learning opportunity. They would be able to get a credit. So you, you might use that to entice some participants as well if you need them, Len.
I have always used students, whether it's fourth graders in their civics class at, uh, the Master Color Elementary School with Ms. LaJoy. Um, we've always used students. I love having them there at the primary, at the town meeting. We had trouble finding workers, particularly at J Muse. The people that were checking people in, in the morning were three students. They were seniors. They did a great job. They had a ball. They enjoyed it. They were wonderful. If there are any students that are interested in doing this, they need to contact me directly. And I'm happy to find something to do for them and we'll get them credit. Same goes for November.
Good, thanks.
Which would be a more important date.
Yeah.
As we expect many more voters on, in November.
Yeah, right now, we, as I said, we had over 1,500 ballots requested, absentee ballot requests for the primary. We have almost, at least as of Monday, we had about 1,800 requested for November. November's gonna be busy and I'm hoping this is kind of a dry run for November, work out the kinks. And so we're making everything happen this time so that we can know how we do it, what we do and work out any problems that we're gonna have. But I'm optimistic about it and I'm really looking forward to the changes. And it, these are changes that are gonna be happening in 2020 only. I don't know what's gonna happen next year, but for 2020, September, November, this is what's gonna work.
Okay. So you're, you're repositioning, uh, the town council members to the front doors as opposed to worrying about, um, voter IDs? Or you're gonna need to cover that as well?
Nope, that's correct. I have other volunteers coming in to do same day registrations, uh, others that are gonna be coming in to process absentee ballots. And like I said, we're not gonna be standing in line with a bunch of absentee ballots at the checklist because that will already have been done. Um, and so we've already got that. No, I'm, I'm asking you guys to be greeters.
Well, that could certainly be fun.
Opportunity to meet your, uh, your constituents.
As well as, as well as there'll be three employees at the three sites, uh, working again, um, at, at each site. So you'll also have three, uh, town employees working.
That's why I said, we have a town council and a staff person as greeters. So you can take a break. You're not gonna be stuck there all day long. But the, the three of you will be the greeters. And like I said, if you get flack, come get me, come get Brian, come get Steve. We'll take care of it.
Okay. Sounds like a good plan. Um, I'm presuming everybody is gonna work the same position as they worked at the town election? Does that make sense? Or does anybody wanna change that up? Nancy?
Actually, it's, uh, Bill and I should probably talk, cause there was a, right? We'll talk and let you know, Tom. How's that?
Oh, that sounds great. Thank you. So Len, is there anything else that we can help with or that we need to cover?
Um, I, I think I've taken up enough of your time. I think I've gotten the key points out and I'm hoping, um, people will take it to heart and be as respectful and kind to their neighbors as they've always been in this town. Thank you very much.
Sounds like a good plan. Thank you very much, Len.
Thanks, Len.
Okay, that brings us to, uh, the first of our, our only public hearing for tonight. Um, public hearing is consideration of changes to chapter 183 vehicles and traffic of the Merrimack Town Code, tabled from the August 6th town council meeting, uh, submitted by the town council. The town council will hold a public hearing to consider the recommended changes to chapter 183 vehicles and traffic to revise the wording on Hadley Road to prohibit vehicles from parking on Hadley Road during school hours, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM on school days pursuant to charter article 5. Um, Paul, do you wanna open this? Do you have any opening comments before we open the public hearing?
Um, basically this is-
I get it. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, basically this is, uh, looked at, uh, because of some situation that came up during plowing and during school year as well as I believe this couple of the school, not the school board, but I believe Matt Chevanel has, has talked to us as well about, uh, about this issue. Uh, Dawn is versed on it. Uh, she is- Uh, Dawn is versed on it, uh, she has talked to the neighbors, there was actually one neighbor, I believe, that sent in an email last week, early this week, about this issue, uh, basically all for it. Um, doing this, uh, uh, year, uh, for the school year, because it is tough for vehicles to get through that street in the winter months, as well as during the school year, because of the way the kids are parking on the side of the road in, in that area, and the thing is, is that they, that they use that area to circumvent the, the parking permit passes, um, and try to, try to park there for free, for lack of a better reason. Um, and it's causing a lot of havoc in that small neighborhood, which is very tight streets in that neighborhood, it's a very condensed neighborhood with not a lot of houses on it, but, uh, there's, you know, there is hard to get, if there was an ambulance that needed to get out there, it would be very difficult to run an ambulance through during school. I'll, uh, keep quiet now and let Dawn take over and continue from there.
Okay, thanks, one minute, Dawn, Finley, did you have to, something you wanted to add?
Just a parliamentary kind of thing, we should take it off the table.
Granted, was that a motion to take it off the table?
It was.
Seconded.
And seconded by Bill. Um, we have, it's, it's a roll call vote, so a motion is to take this off the table by, uh, Finley and seconded by Bill, Peter? Did you have a question, or were you voting?
Well, um, is it appropriate to ask why Finley wants to take this off the table, am I missing something?
We tabled the item, and it just needs to be taken off the table for us to, to work with it.
Oh, okay.
It's a parliamentary procedure.
Alright.
That, that he caught me on, I, I missed, so thanks, Finley. So we'll go to a vote, if, uh, there's no other discussion, Nancy? Well, you gotta unmute and talk to us, Nancy.
I had to get my cat out of my face, sorry about that. Yes.
Okay, Tom Koenig, yes, Bill Boyd?
Boyd, aye.
Finley Rothaus?
Yes.
Lon Woods?
Woods, yea.
Peter Albert?
Yes.
Barbara Healy?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes seven zero zero. Yeah, just making sure I was seeing everything correctly, sorry, so now we've taken that off the table, make it semi-official. Um, Dawn, did you wanna add anything to what Paul had to say before we open it to the public?
Um, yes, I have, uh, Kyle did get, receive a phone call from one of the abutters, if I can share the screen, hopefully. Um, so that is the area, um, that we are working on. And I should back up, we did bring this, uh, it went to the Highway Safety Committee back in December, and one of the abutters, uh, Dawn Cody of Hadley Road, was the one that came and presented uh, to the Highway Safety, hence the reason why we're here. And Kyle did have a email from, uh, or a discussion with Judy Gray, she doesn't have any way to do an email, and she did not want to attend due to the COVID, but she isn't very much in favor of the proposed no parking limits. Um, oops, can't read it all. Uh, there we go. Um, and had previously, uh, contacted the school resource officer on numerous occasions, about the cars blocking her drive, her property and plows and other vehicles. Um, so we did have an answer, I did send out certified letters twice to all of the abutters, the first for the twentieth meeting and the second for the tonight's meeting, so they've been noticed. Um, was there one more? So, and I did do, you asked about signs, and in order to put them out, I estimated nine of them, and presently, there is in this section already a no parking, so we don't need to add any signs in there. I believe I had said twelve the last time, so we're down to nine. And that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So I'm gonna say we open this at seven fifty-three for the public, because we just received public input from Dawn. Um, if there's anybody else from the public that wants to make a comment on the, the change, uh, as far as no parking on Hadley Road during school hours from seven A M. to three P M., um, please dial in and raise your hand using star nine. And we'll, we'll hold this open for a little bit, so you have a chance to do that. Um, again, the information for the meeting number to dial into should be on your screen, if you're watching this on Facebook or on Merrimack T V. Uh, you need the, the phone number and the meeting I D., and you can, uh, raise your hand with star nine on your phone when you've dialed in. Um, in the meantime, this is, this is our public hearing for this, we talked about it, and Dawn made a presentation at a meeting prior. Uh, we will have one more meeting to decide whether we actually accomplish this or not, a third reading, if you will, um, before this would actually become part of the, uh, the Town Code. Um, and so we're looking to see if there's anybody from the public, uh, that has any additional comments. Uh, we've had two people, obviously, that have been specifically for this, the person that presented it to the Public Safety Committee, and the person that Dawn just indicated contacted Kyle, uh, due to a lack of email, and, and inability to be in our meeting tonight. I'm not seeing anybody calling in, so I'm gonna, um, I tried to fill in the dead time there, I'm gonna go ahead and call this closed at seven fifty-seven, and we'll move to, uh, see if there's any other comments from the council. Anybody else, Peter?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd make a motion to, uh, move this on to the next hearing process at this time.
To move to the third hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Nancy?
Barbara.
Barbara, I'm sorry, I, um, so a motion was made by Peter to move this to the third hearing, third reading, uh, seconded by Barbara. Are there any other comments, Bill?
Just a quick question, i- is the reason why we need to do this for a third reading as opposed to putting it on the consent, consent agenda? Because usually if there's a third reading, means it's still, we're, we're still debating the particular issue. I, my preference would be to put it on the consent agenda, 'cause I don't, I don't, I don't have any issues with it.
It, 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 it's still considered the third reading, it has to be presented at a third meeting, uh, but we can put it on the consent agenda without any problem, that's not, that's not a different thing. They're both the same thing.
Okay, I appreciate the clarity, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the council? If, Lon?
Uh, I'm confused now, am I voting for a third hearing or for consent agenda?
Uh, it's all the same thing, if it comes out to a public meeting again, it'll be our third reading, that third reading can be the consent agenda, and if anybody wants to discuss it, we can vote to pull it off of the consent agenda and make it a regular discussion. But if it's on the consent agenda or not, we still are discussing it and voting on it in a third meeting, Peter?
I don't have a problem, I can amend my motion to move it on to a third hearing and place it on the consent agenda, if there's no further discussion or, or debate.
The most, to move it to a third reading, the chairman will probably put it on the consent agenda as the third reading, just as a matter of putting the agenda together. So there's no need to make a change. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll go to a vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Uh, Tom Koenig, yes, Bill Boyd?
Boyd, aye.
Finley Rothaus?
Yes.
Lon Woods?
Woods, yea.
Peter Albert?
Yes.
And Barbara Healy?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes seven zero zero, we'll move it to a third reading, probably at our next council meeting, on the tenth of September. Good, that brings us to legislative updates from state reps. Uh, again, if there's anybody, uh, wishing to address the council, please dial in to the virtual meeting. Uh, the number's on the screen, um, and, and the meeting I D. is on the screen as well. Once you're in, dial star nine, and we'll recognize you and allow you to address the council, this is for, uh, legislative updates. Realize there may be some difficulty in getting in, uh, if you do get in, please, you know, find a way to let me know, or send me an email, and, um, if you don't, haven't gotten in and you were trying to, uh, we'll find a way to, uh, work it out. I'm not seeing anybody, and, and I haven't gotten any emails from anybody, and so we'll move on. Town managers report, Paul, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I have one item. The planning board will hold a public hearing at their virtual meeting on September first to consider a variety of amendments to the zoning ordinances, to address repeated ordinance administration and or enforcement tests, definitions, ordinance references, home occupations, dimensional requirement clarifications, travel trailers references, and modifications in short compliance with the state building code signs, as well as amend the ordinance to, by updating and reformatting the telecommunication tower section, full details located in the notice of public hearing with the community development. Thank you. It's a little more difficult not having it on a piece of paper in front of you, by the way.
Yeah. I, I can appreciate that. Um, I, so if I can paraphrase what you said, there's a public, there's a planning board meeting on September first, and in that, they will be talking about some changes to the ordinances that they run by, uh, and you can find information on that on the website.
Correct, it's the zoning ordinances.
The zoning ordinances. Okay. Uh, any questions for the, uh, town manager, assistant town manager on his report? Finley?
Sorry about that, uh, after the planning board, does it co- go back to the zoning, or does it come to us, as, after those changes are considered?
I think, uh, go ahead, Tom, I was just gonna say, I think, uh, because of charter and, and, uh, how it's written is, they have to come to you for finalization.
So after the planning board, it doesn't go back to zoning first?
I, I don't know if it goes back to zoning or not, to be quite honest with you. I think it comes to the council for final approval.
Good, thank you.
Okay, I, yeah, that may very well be the case, I don't recall, honestly. So we'll, well, if it's not that, we'll let you know, but I'm pretty sure it is, Paul's pretty good at that kind of stuff. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have no consent agenda for tonight, uh, which brings us to O Business. Uh, the first one is consideration of changes to Chapter one eighty-one, traffic and special event management of the Merrimack Town Council, Town Code, final reading, submitted by the Merrimack Town Council, the Town Council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter one eighty-one, traffic and special event management of the Merrimack Town Code, amending section eight, one eighty-one dash oh five, violations and penalties pursuant to Charter Article five. If you recall, this, uh, change was, if I can find it, this change was simply to change, the, the only change going on in one eighty-one is to change the number or value of the parking violation fine in one eighty-one oh five A from the twenty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars. In the event we have a special event parking requirement, and people violate the parking requirements of a special event, uh, the fine would go from twenty-five to seventy-five dollars. Um, are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion to approve by Bill Boyd and seconded by Nancy Harrington, any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote, um, roll call, Nancy?
Yes.
Um, yes, uh, Bill Boyd?
Bill Boyd, aye.
Finley?
Yes.
Uh, Lon Woods?
Woods, yea.
Peter Albert?
Yes.
And Barbara Healy?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes seven zero zero as well, thank you very much. Uh, the next item under O Business is consideration of changes to Chapter one eighty-three vehicles and traffic of the Merrimack Town Code, final reading. Um, this was tabled at the August sixth Town Council meeting, submitted by the Town Council. The Town Council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter one eighty-three vehicles and traffic of the Merrimack Town Code to amend one eighty-three dash thirty-six, Schedule nine, parking prohibited at all times pursuant to Charter Article five. This was tabled, they made a motion to put, a motion made by Bill Boyd to take it off the table, is there a second for that?
Second.
Nancy raised her hand first. Um, so a motion to take it off the table by Bill, seconded by Nancy Harrington, we'll go to a vote, uh, Nancy?
Yes.
Um, yes, Bill?
Bill Boyd, aye.
Uh, P, uh, Finley? I'll take that as a yes. Just nod your head at least.
Yes, sorry.
Yes. Lon Woods?
Woods, yea.
Peter Albert?
Yes.
And Barbara Healy?
Yes.
Okay, so that passed the seven zero zero, it's now off the table and open for discussion. Um, again, this is the parking on one side of the road only in the Courier Road neighborhood, as was presented in the, uh, in the, in the original document, as far as which side and all of the roads in, in, uh, the Courier Road neighborhood. Um, anybody have any comments or suggestions? Uh, Paul, you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, as you can see, uh, we have our, uh, police chief and, uh, deputy chief and, and chief Duke, and I'm sorry, but I, oh, Matt and Captain Tarleton, how you doing? Um, here, they actually have a short video though, that, uh, they would like to show. Um, they took a fire truck, the council asked to take a fire truck and a, and a apparatus down there. I believe they have a short video that they would like to show the council and, and the public, and describe what they saw as they drove the vehicle down by parking two, uh, vehicles on each side of the road. So if you wouldn't mind, if they could do that, that'd be great, thank you.
No, take it away.
Um, I think Nick is, Nick has the video and he's gonna put it up, can you all hear us?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to say, first of all, um, Tom and Paul's backgrounds are really making us jealous over here.
You've got a nice background, what are you talking about?
It's all warm and everything, and, uh, so we actually, um, went down with Nick to Courier Road, and, because I know there had been some discussion on whether or not we should put the parking um, on one side of the road, especially on Hemlock. So Hemlock, if you recall, you go all the way down Courier, and Hemlock is the road that when you get to the end of Courier, you take a left, that's Hemlock. Uh, so our concern was if people were parked on the north side of Hemlock, um, that they would not be able, the fire truck would not be able to make that turn. Um, Nick, are you there? Oh, there he is, okay, so this, it might be easier if, if we play the video so we can talk. So as you can see, the fire truck, which Matt would not let me drive, is coming down, I'm sorry, is coming down, um, that's Courier Road, turning left onto Hemlock. Now with no cars on the north side, which would be the driver's side of the truck, um, he can make that turn with no problem. So we parked cars on the south side, or the passenger side of the truck, um, so that you could see that, that that is still a possibility. Now this is with cars parked on both sides of Courier Road. Um, and as you can see, although he would probably be able to do it with some damage, he's, he could get through, but that is, that fire truck does not fit there, um, unless there's spotters, if, if they're parked even closer, there's no way at all without ramming into them, that they could move that truck through those cars parked on either side of the road. So, um, our suggestion, um, maybe this is gonna be with both cars parked, hold on, I'm not sure where we're gonna go here, Matt just wanted to drive around the neighborhood a few times.
I think we're seeing both samples with and without cars parked on the side.
Okay, yep, that's, I'm sorry, we have something on our right side of our screen, um, so as you can see, no problem with si- one side of the parking on the right side, but once you put that other car on the other side, there's no way that it can get through. So Hemlock is, um, right now, you can park.
That wasn't even Hemlock, that was Courier, right?
That was Courier, correct, so if there are vehicles on the right side or the south side So if there are vehicles on the right side or the south side of Hemlock and none on the north side, so the driver's side of the truck, there's no problem with him turning down that road if there's cars parked on that south side. But once you put cars on the north side, that's where there begins a problem. So it's our recommendation, and I'm speaking for Matt, I'm sorry, but it's our recommendation that we continue with the parking on Hemlock on the right side, but eliminate the parking on the north side, especially around the curve, around the bends, in that you only allow one side parking throughout the neighborhood, the rest of the neighborhood, if that makes any sense. I know it's very confusing.
Wait, you just said one side only on Hemlock, is that right?
That's correct, so.
And you said one side everywhere else?
In one side, because as you can see, if there's car, if you can park, if you park two cars on either, one car on either side of the road, you can't get the fire truck through. I will just show you that one more time. So this is coming down Courier toward Hemlock. This allows, so this is one-sided parking, which the side that we would suggest, and there's, there's no problem whatsoever. When you turn down to Hemlock there, if you get to the end and turn left, it switches, I mean, I'm sorry, it stays so that the parking is only on the right side, the passenger side, and there's no parking on the driver's side, the north side of Hemlock. That allows the truck to turn with no issues whatsoever. So I guess actually, yes, it is no parking on one side of the road throughout the entire neighborhood.
Okay, which is slightly different than what I, I guess we were talking about last, last meeting, thinking that for straightaways, they could make it through, but for the corners, they might have problems. Now you're suggesting that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I do think that, I think we have changed our mind a little bit on that because, you know, although, and I'm not gonna, I'm gonna knock on wood, we have not run into this problem. So this, we're trying to anticipate what could be a problem. We have not experienced this though. But as you can see with that photo right there, when you have cars parked, and I'm pushed on the right side, I'm pushed up on that curb, there's just no way moving that truck forward that he can get through.
Without taking up mirrors at least, huh?
And the side of the, I did ask him if he would take my car and do that with it, but it didn't happen.
Sorry. That wasn't that funny. Okay.
Come on, it was too tough.
Funny, but not that funny, but anyway. Okay, well, that's kind of, kind of damaging evidence, I think, as far as, you know, we've heard people tell us that parking on both sides of the street is not a problem. Now theoretically, people parking in front of their own house could pull up on the curb a little bit or something like that, but if they park inside the curb, the way it's drawn, now are most of the streets have curbing or have distinct edges to the roads, or is that limited to this area in the neighborhood?
I'm pretty, I don't know if Don has a different answer, but I'm pretty positive that it's, it's, has the curb going throughout the whole neighborhood, or most of it, if not all. Hi, Don.
Hi, I don't know that answer.
I, I, I'm pretty sure Courier definitely does. When we redid the drainage down that way, I know that, I believe we put the curbing in for that one. I'm not sure on South Egan or, or the, the other, the other streets in that neighborhood.
All the work was done prior to my getting there, so I haven't spent a lot of time down in that neighborhood.
And, and we're trying to be respectful of people's lawns, so we, we did park as close to the curb as possible and not on somebody's lawn. And hopefully, people would respect other people's front lawn and not put their cars in somebody's front lawn, if they are parking on the left or the right side of the road.
Yeah, but on the other hand, the neighborhood has expressed a lot of interest in not having the restrictions for one-sided parking, so I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but there are easements and there are other things along there. Peter?
Yeah, um, I, yeah, I, I, now that we've got the residence only parking there, do we, I guess what I'm trying to discern is that maybe the chiefs can answer this for me, but would we be all right if we put the no parking on the side that you're talking about at the very end of Courier there and around the corner to Hemlock and left the rest of the neighborhood alone? Could we leave it one side parking in that specific area? Or do you folks now feel it's a general overall, it's a problem with throughout the neighborhood?
No, I think, I think that we have to stay, I just wanna make sure I'm answering your question correctly. I think it has to be one-sided on the right side, like shown in the video, because when people do it both sides of the road, the truck, the fire truck will not be able to go through, so it wouldn't, because that was a straightaway that we did that on, just for that purpose, to make sure that it wasn't just on the corner, but it's, it's, that was a straightaway. So even if you do it on the corner or the other streets, it's not gonna matter, the truck still will not be able to get through. You know, I, I don't know the, the size of the roads, you know, up off of South Egan and those, because we were just concentrated on down near the entrance to the falls where the, most of the parking is taking place, but I think you would still run into those problems if people were parked too close together.
I agree. Unless the, unless the other roads, which I don't believe they are, are substantially wider, we're, we're gonna run into the same problem. And I think it's worth noting too, that none of those vehicles that are, that were parked are particularly large. They're, they're small cars and, and as the chief noted, they're parked with the passenger side tires at least touching the curb, if not on the curb. You move either of those out six, eight inches and on a wider road, it's, it's not gonna happen.
And the truck you brought through was, was indicative, that was your fire rescue truck, is that right?
That was the heavy rescue, but they're all, they're all substantially the same size, plus or minus, minus inches.
All right, thanks. Nancy?
I think we've talked about safety being an issue for a long time, and we've asked for the opinion of the fire department, the fire chief regarding this. I think he's answered it. We don't like the answer and the neighbors aren't gonna like the answers, and I personally don't blame them, but our responsibility is to be able to respond to a statement regarding safety, and I don't think we have a choice. So my, you know, I think we have to go with this. My question is, I just wanna make sure that the determination, whether it's the sides, east, south, west, those kind of things, address your suggestions. So from the fire department to police, have you looked at the suggested sides of those streets and does that fulfill your need?
Yes.
But anyway, that's my opinion. I, I, I don't think how we cannot do it based upon what we've heard. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Finley?
The, I was not, because we passed the residence only situation, I wasn't in favor of this, and I, I still have the same concerns moving forward with all of the one-sided closures. When I think of Carter Road, Longa, Mayhew, all of those, there's other neighborhoods that, that really fit in even, you know, better than this. Those roads down on Bedless Lake are very tiny, and so I don't know if, you know, I don't know, I just don't, I think that the congestion is gonna be much more limited now is my guess, since a lot of our problems were coming from out of the area, and so that's still my thoughts on that. I, down the Hemlock, end of Courier, Hemlock and wrapping back up around the corners, I, I definitely understand that and totally agree. The rest, I think would be okay, but just wanted to put that out there.
Peter?
I agree with what Finley just said. I think that the park issues and everything kinda put a highlight on this, but I don't ever recall there being issues on South Egan on the, or Birch, and I definitely don't see an issue in why we need it on Pine Haven, and I figured the other little cul-de-sac there as well. So to me, I'm good with the, the no resident parking and then the one side and only down where Finley just described, the end of Courier and around the loop there.
Okay, Barbara?
Yeah, I guess my question is for the chief and, and the chief. When you were driving the truck, did you take it all the way and do the width test all the way through that whole neighborhood, just as Finley and Pete were talking about?
No, we did not. We concentrated on the, the most problem area, which is Hemlock and the end of Courier.
Okay.
But as I said too, unless, and I don't believe this to be the case, unless the roads are substantially wider, the, the result would be the same.
Well, that's, that's kind of why I was wondering, because actually, I was against going with the one-sided parking, but you gotta be able to get a truck through there, and if all of the streets are equally narrow and if anybody is having a party on any given day, it could create a problem, even with resident only parking. So. I, yeah, okay, thank you.
Peter?
Um, and I, you know, I see the logic of, well, the road's all the same throughout the neighborhood, and I guess I'm trying to think, I mean, people, that neighborhood's been around a long time, and other than this, the Wildcat Falls Park, and that area, that curve down there being a problem, none of the others, I mean, I've gotta imagine, we've been through those neighborhoods before and there have been big parties over the, over the years. So to me, I, I guess, I, that's why I'm not so concerned about the one-sided parking in those other areas.
Nancy? Nancy?
Just one quick comment, and that, that'll be it. Now that, in terms of liability, and I'm usually not a legal person, but now that we know it's an issue, if something down the road happens, we will be responsible because we've been warned. If we didn't know about it, if we didn't know, and there are other, like Finley says, yes, there are other streets as well, and it's probably opening up Pandora's box, but having the knowledge and doing nothing about it, having had the knowledge, I think we're culpable. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a real problem with that, exactly what you just said. I mean, obviously, it hasn't been a problem up until this time, and obviously, the truck could get through. It's got a big enough engine and enough steel on it that it could make it through there, but it would create a certain amount of damage. Is, is that a, is that a reason for us to restrict the entire neighborhood to one-sided only, and, and like Finley said, is that gonna require all these other neighborhoods that are as same size to be restricted as well? I don't really know a good answer to that at this point. Peter, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I get where Nancy's going, and I, and I understand that, but I really, I, I'd want a legal opinion on that, because I don't, I don't know if that's true. I mean, so now do we have to change the way we recreate and rebuild our roads whenever we do them again now and so forth?
Well, we do already.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, but I, I guess, you know, but is that gonna force us to do that, all the roads? So I don't know if I necessarily agree with Nancy, I know where you're going with it, it does sort of make sense, and I wouldn't be surprised if a lawyer said that, but I'd really love to get a legal opinion on that.
Bill, did you, were you trying to make, I'll get with you in a minute, chief. Were you trying to make a comment, Bill?
I do have a comment, but I wanna hear from my colleagues first.
Okay. Lon?
I'll defer to Barbara.
Thank you, Lon. Thank you, Lon. I, can we table this and ask for a legal opinion?
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Can I ask the chief what you wanted to say?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I, I under, I understand all of the, the concern, you know, now with the other roads and everything, but I think we have to also keep in mind that what is drawing the, the amount, the volume of cars is the park. So a lot of these other roads, we don't have these issues because, yeah, there are parties here and there, but it's not on a consistent basis. The, the cars are a consistent basis because of the park that's down at the end. And I, just for clarification purposes, because I, I know, honestly, the amount of times that we've talked about this, it's very confusing, so it might be confusing for other people too. The entire neighborhood, the Courier Road neighborhood, all the streets that encompass Courier Road neighborhood, that will all be resident only parking, correct? Okay.
Between May 15 and September 15 only.
Correct. And so now our, our concern is not whether, it is just will we make, well, will you make the parking in that neighborhood, one side parking only, still to remain resident only, correct?
Between May 15 and September 15.
And all the other times people can park, you know, if you come from Massachusetts and you're visiting, it's not gonna require the, the placard that we're talking, discussing, correct?
Outside of that time period, right, it will not require that.
Okay, thank you.
But if we go with one side parking only, that's year round?
Correct.
Okay, Paul?
I just, real quick, real quick. If the council doesn't wanna do one-sided parking only, that means we're gonna have to put more signs on the other side of the road also to restrict to Merrimack residents, because we are only putting them on one sides with an arrow saying no parking, Merrimack resident parking from here to here with an arrow facing one another, to make it enforceable for the police, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, will we have to put them on the other side of the road as well?
Yes.
So we'd have to put up.
Yes, it will require both sides.
Required both sides, put those, those signs up saying from May to September, so there's still gonna be the same number of signs as well. I just wanted to get that out there, so everybody's aware of that.
All right.
We're gonna have to sign the other side of the road as well.
Lon?
I believe a motion to table is.
That's where I was trying to go, and I saw your hand. So we have a motion, well, theoretically, it's non-debatable, but by chairman's rules, I was allowing a little bit of further discussion. So there's a motion on the table, was it seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Lon to table this to the September 10th meeting? A date certain? Otherwise, it just kills it.
Or however long it takes to get a legal opinion returned to us.
They're pretty quick.
Pick a, pick a date and we'll work out the requirements.
The 10th.
We'll get back up again on the 10th and table it again if that, if we don't have the right information yet. So the 10th, we're tabling to the 10th if, if this passes, and we'll go to a vote. Nancy? Nancy?
I just spilled my drink. No. Sorry.
No. Tom, yes. Bill?
Bill Boyd, nay.
No. Finley Rothaus, are we tabling?
Yes.
Lon Woods?
Woods, yea.
Peter Albert?
Yes.
Barbara Healy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 5-2-0. So we're tabling this item till the September 10th for further information and clarification. Thank you. That brings us to new business, committee appointments. We had interviewed quite a number of different people for the Merrimack Conservation Commission. What we would like to recommend is that Michael Swisher, who is currently an alternate, be moved to his full-time position that was vacated by Matt Karen when he moved out of town, and then to appoint Michael Druin to be the new alternate to the Conservation Commission, with our thanks to Ellen Colvin.
Amy Seminow.
Bill, help me out. Amy Seminow. Who have also applied, and we, we've asked them to, to hold on to their application or to let us hold on to their application for future. We had three people effectively applying for one vacant spot, plus the one that was already in the alternate position, which is a great position to be in. We, we pick and choose and, and always, oftentimes in the past, have had openings in, in boards and committees, because people haven't been interested. oftentimes in the past have had openings in, in boards and committees because people haven't been interested, uh, to even sign up as an alternate. Um, now we have some people that are showing some in- interest and we have some backup, which is good. So I really thank Amy and Ellen for, uh, putting their name in. We'd like to hold on to you and keep you for, uh, future efforts. Um, and, uh, Bill and I and, uh, the chair, uh, felt that, uh, Michael Swisher and Michael Druin would be the best in those positions, uh, at this time.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Are you approving both, both changes at this point or?
Take them, take them as one, please, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so you're moving approval of Michael Swisher moving from an alternate position to a full-time position?
That is correct and Michael Druin to an alternate position.
Okay, so you're doing them both together?
Please.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second. Okay. I got ahead of you, so Bill, Bill made the motion and I seconded it to appoint Michael Swisher to the full-time position and Michael Druin to the alternate position. Um, just, Bill, do you want to talk to that?
I mean, Mike, Mike Swisher has done yeoman's work already. And I think it's, it's obviously a part of the natural, the, the, the natural progression to be, uh, promoted from an alternate to a full-time member. So, um, he's put in the work and and I expect him to continue to do the work that, that he's done on the commission. Uh, Mike Druin comes to us from, from Hudson. Uh, he was active with the Hudson Conservation Commission prior to moving to Merrimack. Uh, Michael, uh, developed a program in Hudson called Hike Hudson, which, uh, involves kind of like a, a, a walking tour, a narrating tour that, uh, that he started. And, uh, and it's still, is still in existence with, with other people taking on the gallant. He wants to conduct a similar program here in Merrimack. I think, I think Whistled Nature Preserve is just the, 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 the natural location for a program like this that, that, that Mike, Mike Druin wants to start. He brings, uh, extensive trail work and, uh, research experience as well. One of the things he did in Hudson was Hudson did not have a catalog of where their conservation easements were in town. So Mike took it upon himself to research the registry deeds, uh, look, reading all the, the deeds involved in the town of Hudson, the Hudson Conservation Commission. And they were able to catalog specifically of the types of conservation easements that existed in Hudson. Uh, the do's, the don'ts, that kind of thing. So, um, he, he, his skill set is second to none and I think it's going to be invaluable to the Conservation Commission as, um, as, as they transition from, from what I would like to turn, in my opinion only, what, going from an acquisition phase to a, to a, to a maintenance phase. So it's really exciting to, to obviously promote his candidacy to be on the Conservation Commission. So looking forward to, to him being a part of the Conservation T- uh, Commission team and, uh, beginning to add to the, to the gems that we have in our community, which we talk about, um, whenever we get the opportunity to do so. So I'm really excited about his candidacy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. And I would echo those comments. Bill's, um, that's, that was the, the information that we got from the interview. And, uh, he definitely seemed like he was active and anxious to do the hike Merrimack plan that he, that he had in Hudson. Uh, it sounded like a really good forward motion. And he's actively involved with the Sklar property on the subcommittee there. And so he's already actively involved with various things throughout the Conservation Commission. So is any other questions or comments on the motion to appoint Michael Swisher to the full-time position and Michael Druin to the alternate position that Michael Swisher is vacating? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Um, again by roll call, Nancy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, Bill Boyd?
Boyd, aye.
Finley?
Yes.
Uh, Lon?
Woods, yea.
And Peter?
Yes.
And Barbara?
Yes.
Thank you. So that passes seven zero zero to make those appointments to the Conservation Commission. So we thank them very much. We ask you to stop by the court's office at some point to get yourself sworn in. Um, sorry, we couldn't get this done last week, so you can make the meeting officially. Um, just, uh, well, yeah, that's about, you need to go through and get yourself sworn in in order to be able to proceed forward, uh, with the Conservation Commission. So thank you very much. It brings us to our second item under new business, which is the Bedford Road Bridge Balancing Change Order, submitted by Public Works Deputy Director and Town Engineer Dawn Tomala. Town Council to consider a request to expend from the Highway Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund to cover cost of change order number one for the Bedford Road Bridge project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, this is a, a housekeeping, um, issue. Uh, as you know, we previously would budget this through the budget process. And I believe if, uh, my memory serves me right, we actually had to do Bedford Road over a two-year budget cycle because of the estimates we got from the, um, the state. Uh, what happened during the process, and Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, we had some delays because of the historic society of the state, uh, uh, bat- the bat issue, uh, to make sure that, uh, about the bats over in that area, that old bridge that used to, uh, the old concrete bridge that used to be over there, uh, seeing if that was historic and if that was a habitat, things of that sort. So this is really a housekeeping issue to make sure that the council, um, that the full amount of the project has been appropriated by the council, um, to be able to take it out of the, it's the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund, not the Highway Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund. It's road, uh, that was a misprint. Um, so this is, like I said, a housekeeping to do a balancing of, of all the change orders, pluses and minuses. And this was the extra money that would have been spent on, on the bridge. Uh, that is almost, I believe, ninety-nine percent uh, done. I believe there might be some utility line work still going on, Dawn. Is that correct?
That's correct. Eversource has completed all of their work. Comcast, um, has their new lines up, but they won't finish their work until September eleventh. And we have had no word at all consolidated.
So we have to wait for them to, before we can finish?
Um, we'll be having a meeting next week. I just found this out this afternoon at four o'clock. Um, so we will, we will have to address it. There are a few things that are left to be done, um, by the sweat, by the contractor, uh, one, taking out the, um, temporary road along the side. They'll be looming that area. And there's a couple of other cleanup things that they need to be doing. And then they'll be finished. Um, but this will, this extra, this money runs through all of that, so.
Okay, and the amount of money we're talking about is twenty-four thousand from the town as our matching to the state's ninety-six thousand for the total change order of a hundred and twenty. Is that right?
Right, you have to raise the hundred and twenty thousand and then we will end up paying twenty-four thousand. The state will reimburse the ninety-six thousand.
Okay, so are, are we actually then withdrawing a hundred and twenty from the, the Road Improvement Infrastructure, whatever it was fund? Paul?
No, what we're, what, what the motion would be is to raise and appropriate a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, of which reimbursed from the state, uh, Bridge Aid Project for ninety-six thousand and the withdrawal of twenty-four thousand dollars from the Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund.
The total's a hundred and twenty thousand, not a hundred and twenty-six.
A hundred and twenty then.
Thank you, Dawn. Does everybody understand that? Bill? Bill, did you have a question?
Just a, a,
Comment?
Uh, no, a question for Dawn. Uh, how much longer for the striping of the roads? I, I know they, they've got the, uh, the top layer on. Just curious to know when the, when the striping is.
They've only got the base on. You're talking about the rest of Bedford Road?
That's correct, yep.
They've only put the base on right now.
Okay.
I have not got it, received a date for the final yet. They have to let things set, uh, before they do go to the next phase.
Okay.
It should be next week, I'm hoping.
Okay.
We should finish up and then the striping would follow shortly thereafter because it's a very busy road and we know we need to get that out there.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, Dawn.
Yeah, that would be good, especially if school's going to start up on the ninth of September. Uh, we had extra stuff. Lon Woods?
Yes, I guess to, uh, Dawn or Paul, do we anticipate further change order, uh, increases in the contract?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, th- this is the final one.
Thank you.
Okay. If, do we have a motion to, anybody move the motion that Paul stated for us of withdrawing a hundred and twenty thousand, of which ninety-six would be reimbursed by the state?
So moved.
Moved by Lon Woods, uh, seconded by Nancy. Is that right?
Correct.
Um, any other comments or suggestions or questions? We'll move to a vote. Um, by roll call, Nancy?
Yes.
Uh, Tom, can you guess? Bill Boyd?
Boyd, aye.
Finley Rothaus?
Yes.
Lon Woods?
Woods, yea.
Who did I lose? Nancy? No, I got Nancy.
Me.
Pepper?
Yeah, Peter?
Yes.
And Barbara?
Yes.
Did I get everybody?
Believe you did.
Okay, so that passed seven zero zero. My screen changed and now it's changed back again. So it's not fair to change while I'm trying to take a vote. Just talking to the computer. Um, so that takes care of that one. Um, Dawn, but we're still on for the, uh, the next one, which was an addition that we put on yesterday, uh, for Babusick Lake Road Emergency Drainage Repairs. Um, mercy, emergency drainage repairs need to be made as a result of deteriorating CMP metal drainage pipe between McQuestion Road and Jessica Drive. Pipes were found in conjunction with the Middle School Project along the same stretch of road. Request is to be able to withdraw up to seventy thousand dollars out of the Capital Reserve Fund purchase account. Paul, is this number correct? Oh, one, oh, eight, eight, nine, one, zero?
Yes, yes, it is.
For drainage improvements to cover the repairs needed. Um, this was submitted by Dawn yesterday. Dawn, you want to fill us in, please?
Well, if I could real go quick here, um, what, what happened was the, uh, CSSR contractor was, uh, doing their buttoning up of the sewer line project. And as they were doing that, they came across, uh, a drainage pipe in the ground. They had to go underneath it to make the, uh, the sewer line connection. In doing that, basically the old metal pipe, metal drainage pipe, as we've replaced all throughout town now, those old culverts, it basically disintegrated on them. Uh, so while the road is open, we'd like to take, uh, do this emergency repair in that area while the road is open so that the road doesn't have to get opened again for a fourth time to these, uh, to these neighbors, uh, you know, to, to when they originally put the, the sewer in and then we just did the third one to close it and reopen it and disturb that, those six homes again. Uh, Dawn spent some time and I believe, uh, uh, you did also, ch- Mr. Chairman, with the, uh, the school board members, uh, not school board, the school, uh, superintendent and the business administrator on this. And, and they're in favor of also leaving the road shut to do this so that we don't have to disturb them one more time and get the project done fully, properly, incorrectly, once and for all. And, uh, Dawn has a date. I believe the date is, uh, it only pushed out the, uh, final date by a couple, couple of weeks, um, for the project. So I think we'll be in good shape, uh, and fill in the gaps that I missed.
Uh, the date is September sixteenth, um, and I did, I talked to Matt Chevrenell and he was in favor of just getting the work done and not, not opening the road and trying to do other, um, you know, one-way alternating or anything like that. Just get it done, get it out of there. Um, because if we can get in, not have to deal with the alternating, hopefully it will cut the time down. And I gave him a, a time of September sixteenth. Um, that's when I was told by the contractor in the worst case scenario that they would, they would take to get this work done.
Okay, and that's for work between, um, McQuestion and Jessica Drive along Babusick Lake Road.
Correct.
Um, and I did reach out to the, to the superintendent's office as well. I didn't hear back from the superintendent, but Matt did call me back to express the same information and express appreciation that we reached out to let them know. The question, the reason we're trying to do that is because they're planning to open school on a halftime basis on September ninth, where half the students will come in two days a week and the other half will come in the other two days of the week and, and they'll alternate Wednesdays or something close to that effect. Um, and that starts on the ninth, so we have about a one-week overlap that we believe this project will continue to keep Busick Lake Road closed. Um, but Matt expressed to me that he felt like the detour around McQuestion and, and Turkey Hill, uh, would be adequate for the buses for such a short period of time with the lower number of students. Um, and, and they would rather just work it out than, than continue to have hassles for the people in the area and for the school in the long run. Because if we only did a partial job in order to get this done by the fourth, uh, we'd be opening the road again next year, next spring to do the rest of the job. And that would be just not a, not a financially or an intelligent thing to do. Um, and, and they were, they were strongly in favor of, of having us just get it done and get it out of the way.
He also said that on the Friday-
Anybody have any other questions?
On Friday the eleventh, that they wouldn't be going to the school, they're not doing school on Friday the eleventh. So we're talking even fewer days that we, they would be impacted.
Right, so Wednesday, Thursday, and then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of the following week. So, uh, so they're, they, they seem to be reasonably comfortable with that. Um, so are there any other questions as far as allowing the room, the withdrawal of seventy thousand from the, whatever fund that was?
Amy, now-
Capital Reserve Purchase Fund Account.
Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay, same, same fund we were talking about a minute ago, Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund.
Yes.
Uh, if there's no other questions, do we have a motion to allow that? Motion by Nancy?
Seconded.
Seconded.
And seconded by, uh, Peter was waving his hand, but Barbara actually said something, so I heard that. So I want to go with Nancy and Barbara for Nancy made the motion to withdraw the seven, up to seventy thousand dollars from the Capital Reserve Fund, Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund, and Barbara seconded it. Are we good, Paul, or do we need any approvals for signatures or?
No, we're, we're good. We're good with that.
Okay. Um, we'll go to a vote unless anybody's got a real quick question. Um, start with a roll call, Nancy?
Yes.
Um, yes, Bill?
Boyd, aye.
Finley?
Yes.
Lon?
Woods, yea.
Peter?
Yes.
And Barbara?
Yes.
Yes, so that passes seven zero zero. So I think we're good. Um, yeah. We're good with that one, Dawn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
That brings us to, um, a, a, a request by, uh, youth sports. Um, Kevin Beatty is the speaker to talk about the town council considering a request for a need for non-Merrimack youth in our sports program. Um, is Kevin with us tonight?
Yes, I am. Thanks for having me.
Oh, hi, Kevin, thank you.
Um, sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right, um, so we, we had a presentation set up and, uh, then some emails went back and forth this afternoon about, um, who makes the decisions. Um, what we're looking for is to use out-of-town kids for our football teams. Um, I was under the assumption that the town council made the decisions, the bylaws, that the MYA goes by, um. What I found out today is that the MYA stipulates and then they run everything through you guys, um. And so I spoke to Rick via email and, uh, we have a bunch of concerned parents. If we're, if we don't bring in out-of-town kids this year where we can, because some teams have folded, um, if we don't get them, we're going to end up losing probably two to three teams possibly. Um, so that could mean twenty-five kids in Merrimack won't be playing football this year at the youth level. Um, and what I would like to propose to the MYA as a parent, and there's parents behind us wanting this, is to be able for one year to bring select- to bring selected out-of-town kids to our program, so our kids from town can play. Um, I don't know if this affects the contracts that the NYA has with the town, or how you guys feel about it? And if, if it's one of your concerns, um, because of the NYA. It's the NYA's concern, sorry. Public speaking's not my thing.
That's okay, not a problem. You're doing great. Um, so my understanding and, is that it is an NYA decision as to whether or not they allow out-of, out-of-town students, youth to, to participate in NYA sports. Our contract with NYA does stipulate Merrimack residents, because the concern's always been that, um, the money that we're giving to NYA and the, the, uh, in-kind services of using the equipment and the facilities and the labor to manage the fields and all that kind of stuff is all paid for by Merrimack residents. Um, and so I'm sure that's where the stipulation has come from to limit, uh, the, the, the participation to Merrimack residents. But again, NYA is an independent organization, and they are in control of their own organization. Um, we are a, a supporter of the NYA. In fact, we'd probably provide, if you include the in-kind services, we'd probably provide closer to twenty-five percent of their annual budget, uh, between donations and, and building use and field use and, uh, maintenance of facilities. So that's why we have some impact on the NYA, but it's really up to the NYA Executive Board to negotiate with the town council, um, as far as that contract is concerned, and technically that contract is up for renewal as of last June or July. Um, and, and so we're technically out of contract. Um, but there's no reason for us to think we're not extending, you know, on a per diem basis or whatever, uh, until such time as we can get that contract. With COVID-19, things have gotten completely helter-skelter, and we haven't had a chance to keep up with getting that contract renewed. So i- it's still my opinion and the town manager's opinion that it's, uh, an issue that the NYA Executive Board needs to resolve, uh, and then work with the town council in our contract as far as whether we modify the wording or how we handle that. But I, we did receive, we did receive probably two dozen or more emails from concerned parents expressing their desire to be able to open it up in order to be able to fill out the rosters and have those two or, or more teams be able to play this year. And I, I saw lots of them, and I understand everybody's desire. Um, as we've expressed a lot in the past, there's a heavy concern about the impact of COVID-19 and whether football is dealing with the, the social distancing and all that kind of stuff in order to avoid the further spread of COVID-19. And I, I have to admit, I'd be very concerned if we opened it up and kids came in from out of town, and we found a COVID outbreak in the football team that, that spread to parents and grandparents and stuff like that, so I, you know, where that would put us from a liability perspective, or how we would consider that, or what, I don't know. I- i- is it a possibility? I guess I have to say it's a possibility. Uh, is it a likelihood? I don't particularly think so, but, uh, I'm one thought, so. I don't know if anybody else wants to share any thoughts at this point on the council's position relative to out-of-town participants, um. Peter?
I mean, I guess my only concern about it is, and I get that, uh, these, you folks want to get a team going, and I can respect that. But I get, there's a part of me that feels that, um, so you field X number of players on a team, you're gonna have starters and you're gonna have second stringers, and I guess, I, I guess I'd kind of take the offense to, um, a, a kid from Merrimack whose family pays taxes here and so forth, and, um, their kid ends up on the, on the bench while some, another kid from out of town starts. That's just a very small thing, but that's one thing that kind of, I guess, rubs me the wrong way with that.
Well, I'd be, first off, our, our numbers are so low, um, for our youth division, and that's the second, third, and fourth grade, I think we have fifteen kids. Bringing in five, five to six more kids would actually make those kids better, because we can give them a better practice. We can give them more breaks during games. Um, it, it's actually a safety issue. Um, I, last year, we had a team with seventeen kids, and by the end of the year, they were beaten up, they were tired, um, some of them didn't come back. If we have twenty-two kids, we can scrimmage, we can sub better, kids get in more, they have more fun, and they want to come back. And as-
Go ahead, Kevin, go ahead and finish your statement.
And, um, as for the COVID safety concern, um, we did go out, we bought safety shields, um, we have all the hand sanitizers, we do do, uh, temperature checks, um, we do a whole protocol for washing the balls in between, um, the practices, uh, the games have certain stipulations that we have to do safety-wise. And the shield is, it's a full face where no spit can be released outside the helmet and get onto another child. So the safety aspect is, is there. Um, and I mean, we are following all the state guidelines, protocols, and we're going above and beyond.
Yeah, I guess, I, just real quick, Nancy, I, I read a couple of things in here that said that, that some of the neighboring towns have closed down their football programs, and that's why some of them are coming to Merrimack saying they'd like to play, so. Other, other people have expressed concerns and, and they're worried about it, but I'm not trying to make an issue out of that. I understand you're doing the best you can, and, and you are following the guideline. That's a good thing.
Well, the, um, the issue where primarily where we're taking the kids from is Amherst, and they, they closed their season early, because they only had forty kids registered, and they didn't want to spend the money for the helmet reconditioning, getting all the safety stuff in case if they didn't get enough kids because of the COVID. So that, um, and most of the towns in high school and in our league that we're playing in are in thus far. Uh, they about seventy percent of them are yes right now, and they're waiting for final decisions.
Okay, thanks. Nancy?
What I would suggest, and you're right, COVID is a whole separate issue, but what I would suggest is when you're talking to the, the board at NYA, there is gonna have to be modifications with the contract, since it does say Merrimack residents only. So I'm not suggesting what I'm going to suggest is going to make it easy, but it is a suggestion for you to consider that out of, one, it should be a one-year, because it might change next year. And two, there should be a out-of-town schedule fee difference.
Yep.
Okay, so that, that responds to the argument related to, it's a town tax-based process. If you are in fact having the out-of-town players pay extra to compensate for that, I think it's a legitimate argument, but also legitimate to make it a one-year, because I think I would be hesitant to be able to make it across the board for a longer contract. Okay, because next year the situation might be different. Obviously, COVID will be a separate issue, and maybe you'd have more players, and yeah, at that point I'd say, no, no out-of-towners. You know, it should be for Merrimack only, because you'll have sufficient numbers for your roster. So just my suggestions, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, Finley?
I, I didn't hear, at the beginning, you probably did say it, I missed it. Uh, the reason for your fewer numbers this year, is it because of COVID?
They, they've been dropping since two thousand seventeen, I believe we're down thirty-eight percent on our athletes. I mean-
Hey, I- Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
A, a lot of it's due to, um, the concussions, um, a lot of the years, younger kids have been playing on older teams to make the numbers. The kids get beat up, and they, you know, they don't have fun anymore. Um, when, when you have a young twelve-year-old going against a mature thirteen-year-old, um, there's a big difference. Um, and with our numbers, it just, that, that's one of the big reasons why we lose a lot of kids. Um, COVID-wise, I mean, I, it, it's hard to base it if we lost any because of it. Um, I know of one, maybe two, and that's only because they have, uh, grandparents living with them. Um, and the parents have concerns, which rightfully so, and you can't blame them for that. But this year, uh, we went into a new league, um, we're trying to get, you know, the eighth-grade kids playing with the eighth grade, the seventh-grade kids playing with the seventh grade, so on and so forth. And, um, when Amherst went out, I mean, it, for us, it was like a blessing. It, you know, it gives us five to six players on each team, which gives us, you know, full potential at practice, games. And it, it's just, it's a safer situation for the kids.
I, I, I agree with the comments that you've heard already, that it is an NYA issue. Um, with the numbers having been going down, I don't, I, I find it intriguing. Sports is different than it was twenty years ago. Um, and I don't know why that is, uh, but I know the NYA program is, uh, al- always been, the local thing tends to be wrecked. I actually had, uh, a gentleman who's, I think he runs the soccer program, he's the director of it or whatever, uh, come to me about wanting to bring kids in for that program, just to bring it to a higher level. Uh, their concern was field space more than numbers, I guess, but they, um, it, it's, those are things that do have to be dealt with, with the NYA, but, uh, I, uh, uh, I guess, I guess that's it. I do have a few questions, but it really, it wouldn't be necessary for this evening, so I appreciate your time, Kevin.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a couple of things that I, I've noticed, um, um, with this discussion a little bit, is that Mr. Grady is just talking about football, but Finley touched upon it. There's soccer, there's lacrosse, there's other sports that are gonna want to take advantage of having out-of-town kids as well. Just for the councils to know, and Mr. Grady to know, when he goes in front of the executive board, he might just want to be just talking about football, but it's all the sports programs that, if they don't just, they gotta limit it or not limit it, and that has to be in this presentation. Um, the second thing is, is that, uh, uh, are you gonna cap the number of out-of-towners, so to speak, in your program? And that's a discussion that you're gonna have to have with the NYA, and you don't need to discuss it here. But if you're talking that you want to, you have seventeen kids from second through fourth grade, are you only gonna cap at five? Or what happens if ten of them want to play? Are you gonna go up past the twenty-two, now you're up to twenty-seven kids and things of that sort? That, that's just something you're gonna have to talk about with the executive board, but it's something for you to think about as well, because I could see other communities now saying, Merrimack's open, let's go. My kid has a better shot of playing in Merrimack than they do in Derry, or they do in Manchester, or, or other areas, and, and things of that sort, so you might get a bigger influx than what you're really thinking about only five to six kids i- in the, in those, those districts. And I, I say that from experience, because as a youth playing in Merrimack and, and growing up through Merrimack, they opened up a couple of the baseball teams that I played on, and next thing you know, we had, uh, we had tryouts for the teams that were supposed to be just for Merrimack kids, and a lot of Merrimack kids got cut, so. Things of that sort, just something for you to think about, Mr. Grady, when, when you present to the executive board, these, these things, and, and that there are other communities that will want to flood to Merrimack, because they might like your safety protocols better than what they're doing in Derry, or they're doing in Manchester, or they're doing in Nashville. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Bill, did you want to say something?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, you, you know, I appreciate, you know, Finley's position, having been in the community for a long period of time, and you, you know, his wife coaching my, my, his wife coaching my wife in softball, uh, in, in, in a past life, a long time ago. I know that the NYA has, has really provided amazing sports programs for the kids that have grown up in this particular community. But a- as we've looked at the numbers, and, and we've heard testimony from the NYA, and as Mr. Grady has alluded to, you know, enrollment numbers are dropping. I mean, if, if you, if you look at some of the, some of the school districts in, in New Hampshire, there have been some school districts that have been forced to combine, because they don't have the enrollment numbers to put a particular team on the field. You know, I mean, Hollis, Hollis Brookline, I think only within the last couple of years, um, has, has consolidated, so that they could, uh, be able to, be able to provide sporting programs to their kids. And, and, you know, and there are other consolidated districts, like, like Timberlane and Arrow Lakes, that, that I, that come to mind off the top of my head, that, that do that, because they just, in, in a single, singular community, they just don't have the numbers. I, I think, I, I think, yeah, to some extent, we, we need to be, you know, it's, it's, obviously it's an NYA decision, we've been, you know, we've, we've discussed that. And there needs to be a level of, of prudence that needs to be done at that particular level, but I, 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 fr- from, from, from my perspective, I, I, I think, you know, we need to, we need to be open-minded, that there may be other communities that, that, that don't have the programs and may benefit from what Merrimack has to offer. Maybe a question of putting, putting something on, on, on an application or questionnaire that says, does your community have youth programs? If the answer is yes, they can't participate in Merrimack. If they don't, they could be considered to participate in Merrimack. And I don't mean to beat a dead horse, uh, and I'm probably in the minority on this, but I, I think if, if the NYA is gonna be able to survive and be able to put on programs for our kids, I think that there may need to be a, a discussion at the NYA level to opening up to, to kids that don't live in, that don't live in Merrimack. So, thank you.
Lon?
Yeah, I don't know whether it's me, age, the pandemic, um, but I, I respect everything I've heard Mr. Grady explain, except are we, or is the executive committee of the NYA, or are we as a council going to suggest to the community that we, uh, dismantle or change or forever, um, uh, I think damage to the NYA? It is the Merrimack Youth Association. I appreciate Mr. Boyd's comments, and I appreciate his admitting that it's his thoughts. But other communities are other communities. We're Merrimack. NYA, uh, I've been involved with that for a while, and I apologize to my daughters if they think I'm not being as broad-minded as perhaps they would like me to have been. But I'm not at all interested in changing up the NYA in the direction that I hear Mr. Boyd suggesting, or perhaps just the simple action of helping a handful of young folks, um, from other communities participate. It's Merrimack Youth Association. Leave it alone. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, to, to answer that, it's, this proposal's actually to help out the Merrimack kids. Um, if we don't, if we're not able to use those kids, the kids aren't playing.
Okay. Does anybody else have comments they want to make? So I, I don't really have anything else to add at this point, uh, Kevin. I appreciate your coming and talking to us about it. I've got like twenty-two, I think, comments from parents of kids in the programs that want to see changes made, uh, to make sure that their kids can play this year. Um, I, I will pass that around to the council just for our background information. But, uh, I, I think first step is for you to get approval from the NYA board. And, uh, my indication from them was that they weren't prepared at this point to make that, uh, suggestion, uh, but that you were trying to make it for the opening of football season. I understand your urgency. I don't know how to help you out um, any further than that. We're gonna be working with the NYA Executive Board on their contract extension. Um, if we extend it for one year or- If we extend it for one year or three, uh, it are debates that we have to have with them to decide what to do and and how to go forward. I I think there are certainly members of the council that are in favor of your, of supporting your efforts. I think there are a couple that don't want to, and so I I, we're just gonna need to put a story together and and do the best we can with it to see how we can go forward at this point.
So it it would have to go through the vote. They would bring the presentation to you, then you guys would vote on it?
That's right.
All right, cuz I, when I was talking to Rick earlier, I asked him if we could do like a pardon for this season for until the contract comes up, and if we use the select few so we can get going with our season, if the town council would have a problem with that, as long as we charge the out of town kids, you know, the difference between the allocation that we get in our kids, and so on and so forth.
That's an interesting concept. Uh, the the contract is out already. So there is no contract currently with the M Y. We need to negotiate something with them. We can't just make an extension. I I guess we could try to do something. But I don't think we're agenda for tonight to make wording extensions to the contract um, with those kind of changes. So I don't think we can make a change like that tonight regardless. You can get a sense of the board, of the council's positions on something like that, where, like Nancy suggested, you limit it to a year and and make sure that there's a increase in the fees for out of state, out of town youth and stuff like that. To see, to see where things lie, maybe if somebody's willing to make a commitment there, but I I'm not sure that we're prepared to do that. Finley, you had raised your hand. You had something else you wanted to add?
No, actually, I'm all set. I you pretty much covered it. I I thought you were suggesting, yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Grady, I think we haven't heard directly from the board, one way or the other. I've gotten an email from Rick, um, who I'm presuming is the the current president or the current vice president of the, or chairman of the council, or the executive board, or?
Yeah, there was some turnover in the, uh, M Y A executive board. Rick was the vice president, and, uh, he's acting. He's the acting president at the, at the time right now, yes.
Yeah, cuz he, we, we did a, uh, the parents did a presentation in front of the M Y A, and then now this is why we're here. They told us to come here.
Okay, well, I I'm I'm not sure what their thoughts were there, but I think we need to get them to come up with something definitive as to what they're willing to support, and and let us know where where they think M Y A needs to go as the executive board in order for us to be able to proceed.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other thoughts on that? Well, I think that's the, that's about all we can do is ha- we've had this discussion. You've got some ideas from from the council. Um, if there are no other questions or anything like that, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate it. Bill?
No, I was just waving goodbye to him.
Oh, waving goodbye, okay. All right. So, um, quickly, that brings us to our final item on the agenda, the two hundred seventy-fifth anniversary of the town of Merrimack, submitted by Bob LaRue and Vice Chair Bill Boyd, the town council to discuss the suggestions and ideas for the upcoming two hundred seventy-fifth anniversary of the town of Merrimack. And this was originally brought forward, hi, Bob LaRue, um, by Bob and and Bill in conjunction, so, uh, Bob, do you wanna, do you wanna take this, or?
I'll defer to Bob. This is, this is, this is Bob's babe, so.
No, thanks, Tom. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, I guess you kept the best for last, right?
We did, sir.
Yeah.
Especially the raccoons and the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, you know, you don't mind what's behind them. Couple, uh, I don't know, several weeks ago, um, I heard you mention something about the, uh, two hundred seventy-fifth, uh, anniversary of celebration for the town of Merrimack. And
Yes, sir.
My question, uh, to you folks was that, and, uh, you you should have some paperwork that, uh, I gave you, Bill. Bill has it? Okay, you have all that, right? You should.
It's in the agenda packet, Bob.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so on the two hundred fiftieth anniversary, the town of Merrimack, among other things, had special license plates made on, and this is actually what it looks like. Uh, yeah, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Looks good.
And, uh, as you know, this, New Hampshire has a state law that says you must have two license plates in front of your, on your vehicle, both front and rear. And so because of that law, these plates were not legally able to be used. So I contacted the motor vehicle department and asked if Merrimack could, uh, have an exemption for one year to run these commemorative plates on front of their vehicle for the one year. And as you see by your packages, the answer was yes, and we were able to do that. So my question to you folks is, are you planning on doing something similar for the two hundred seventy-fifth?
Well, we obviously don't have that plan yet, um, but but we're looking for people to help us put together plans and and make suggestions and and drive those kind of options. If I were to write that letter, it probably wouldn't get the same responses as you, um, or some others. So if you're recommending that, uh, we certainly ought to consider that for the two hundred seventy-fifth. I I wouldn't have a problem with it myself.
Well, you know, if you ask me, who put all this uh, event together, I ca- I can't answer. I know Ruth Liberty was very involved with it. Uh, so, I mean, I was involved with it as far as contacting the state, like the historical marker on Route Three. Uh, that was, that was missing. We got that back. Uh, the history of Daniel, what's the highway, which was at one point called the Merrimack Valley Way, uh, roads, you know, that kind of stuff. Uh, so, uh, and the town also had, uh, which it doesn't show too good yet in your package I sent it, but this, what you see here is a calendar. The calendar had put that out. I mean, the town had put that out. They had all kinds of things. They had some, uh, uh, postmark envelopes and and things like that. So they had, they had done quite a bit of, you know, they had, I believe they had some quilts also, type of thing. So, uh, so my question is, if you're gonna do this license plate thing, uh, obviously, somebody's gotta stand on it. Have no idea where they got them, how much they cost, or anything like that, or what they were selling for, but, um, once we, you know, once we get them, or even before, I could try to get an exception again, which they probably more likely would grant.
Paul?
Um, I believe there is a, uh, two hundred and fiftieth, a folder in the town manager's office um, that we can start going through and and looking at some of this stuff with the license plate and the calendar. I know there was a quilt. Um, I also, Finley, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't that also when they were trying to raise the funds for the gazebo? Wasn't that built up for the two hundred and fiftieth as well? Abbey Griffin Park Gazebo was was all part of that as well?
It was. The, I just had a daughter walk in the house, so if you hear a little noise, I apologize. Um, but, uh, my, uh, yes, I was a newly elected selectman, actually, and Lenny Worcester, uh, as he was leaving the Board of Selectmen, uh, made a little presentation of an overview of the work he had completed the previous three years. And then he went on to say he really was disappointed we hadn't thought about the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the town. So the Board of Selectmen then put together a committee, and, uh, out of that committee, came the Remembrance Committee, which just begged from, just put out a a letter uh, asking for money, uh, for the gazebo, and they raised six digits. I don't remember the numbers now. Um, but it was, it was pretty incredible, and, uh, I know a lot about it because my wife and my mother were a big part of that, and, uh, Eddie Spence was, Ruth Liberty was, um, gosh, of course, naming names, you always forget people that were important, so I don't mean, I I apologize for that upfront, but that's all, if we're gonna do something, that's what we have to do. We have to find some dedicated, hardworking people, because it was a massive project, and, uh, of course, my wife's proudest accomplishment of that was recognizing Abbey Griffin, which I always tell the story of, uh, her having received the scholarship for four years, uh, for e- each year for four years of her undergraduate work, and, um, went to find out who Abbey Griffin was and found out that it was really her, a trust left by her, and, uh, um, so she was always thankful, wanted to do something to recognize her, and that's how the Abbey Griffin, you know, the park became, you know, um, named Abbey Griffin Park, so. But that's, that's what has to happen. Bob was a big part of, you know, doing the things up at the state end and all, and so.
Yeah, if I, if I may, uh, if Finley's, uh, correct, it was a, uh, in conjunction with a fundraising event. But right now, as as far as I know, that's not on the, on the table. There's no project looking for funding as far as, like, the Abbey Griffin Park. So this would be just doing something for the anniversary, uh, you know, whatever you put out there if you wanna sell it, obviously, but you don't have to raise a certain amount of money to fund whatever.
But but my point is, is that there should be a folder in Town Hall somewhere that talks about everything that was done for the two hundred fiftieth, the license plate, the calendars, and everything else that was was created for, uh, for the, for that, so. There should be a folder. I know there's, there's wigs and bonnets and hats up. I've seen them in in, uh, that they've, people, when they reacted to two hundred and fiftieth, I know they're still at Town Hall, so I would have to imagine there definitely is a folder with all this other stuff in there that we can pull out of the attic and look at and and.
Yeah, you might, you might still, you might have, you might still have a list of the contacts of people who are in the committees. Some of them might still be around.
Absolutely. Barbara?
Yeah, you know, we, um, we have a historical society in town.
Anita Krieger.
We also have the Historical Commission in town. Now, both organizations are going through a transition right now with their leadership, but I'm wondering, you know, is this something we wanna get looped them into as well to become, get involved? Um, Anita Krieger is still with the Historical Commission and the Society, and, um, as you know, she writes a lot of little columns for the Merrim, the old Merrimack Journal, now has a new one, um, regarding the history of Merrimack, so you know, I I think depending on when people wanna actually do this celebration, we need a a committee involving those people, um, and maybe even someone from D P W, Parks and Rec, um, depending on how big we're gonna make this. Just a thought.
I believe Lon, are you still on the Heritage Commission, Lon?
I was.
What, Lon?
I was, uh, not reappointed, uh, when I got elected to the council.
No, I'm on the ca- heritage, the historical commission.
The heritage, it's heritage. For the town, it's the Heritage Commission.
That's right. His, the Heritage Commission. Um, no, I'm on it.
Okay.
Which is why I brought it up.
Okay.
Good reason.
Peter? Did you have something to add?
I just, um, basically was gonna, uh, say to Bob, if he's kind of feeling out the council, I'm certainly in favor of this. I thought it was a nice idea, uh, the two fif- two hundred and fiftieth, and I think it offers those folks, uh, in between two fifty and three hundred, a chance to get one of those plates from Merrimack at two seventy-five. I'm looking for the three hundred one.
We want you there, Bob. Nancy?
Uh, we all received a memo from Mac Asperius as well, talking about, um, the various options that we had for the future, and at the very end, things that have been put off the Fourth of July and that kind of thing, what what are the options are to do fireworks at some point in the future. As usual, Matt does a very comprehensive memo, so I'd like to compliment that again. But I think his idea about taking advantage of the two hundred seventy-fifth anniversary and really concentrating on things in two thousand twenty-one, don't do anything this fall. Do something in next year. So maybe we can establish a planning committee with Matt being on it, cuz that might be part of the activities, the Heritage Commission, a representative from here, just get those, and they can plant, and Bob, Bob, I'm volunteering you already.
No, you're not.
Anyway, but that, my idea is to get those.
I won't be, I won't be a rep at that time.
Well, we'll do it before April.
That's all right. You're still a very important part of Merrimack.
Still a citizen.
Before December first.
Uh, well, you're still a citizen.
He'll have some free time on his hands.
Sure, whatever that is.
There you go.
Hey, you see down on the wall right there?
So my point is that I think a lot of people, Barbara, your suggestions are right on the money, Mac Asperius. I think we should, uh, pull a committee together, make those plans.
I agree.
Okay. Finley?
Oh, they just said I agree.
Well, I know, but your hand is up. So I thought you had.
I didn't lower it the last time. I might apologize, Tom.
Does anybody else have anything they wanna add? Bill, you haven't said anything yet.
I'm on board for whatever, whatever, whatever the council wants to do for direction to celebrate the the two, two hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. I'm on board. I think it's appropriate, and I appreciate um, what Matt's menu, Matt's memo and Bob wanting to do a license plate. I think it's important first steps for us to get the conversation going, so I'm on board.
Bob?
Yeah, okay. You know, if you do have a committee, I might pop in, but don't look for a chair. It ain't gonna happen. Uh, on a different subject, you were talking about elections earlier, a little earlier this evening. This is some information. This, this is some.
Say that again?
It says earlier in the evening, you were talking about elections?
Yes.
Okay, well, this is information I know you've been dying to hear, and you're, you know, you've been keeping awake at night wondering about it, so I will.
On the edge of my chair.
Yes, here we go. In eighteen thirty-two, the first use of voting checklist in Merrimack took place. Now, don't you feel nice knowing that?
I I, um, I got goosebumps.
Uh, yeah, I tell you, I know you've been waiting to know that.
We were waiting with bated breath, actually.
I I know that.
Something like that. So, okay. So I I think that Matt's made a great start on, uh, what we might do with the town activities, uh, as far as something special is concerned. Um, he does point out that April second, which I think is the anniversary date,
Right.
is Friday next year. Um, and and that's Easter weekend, so I'm not sure if that has an impact on doing anything specific to that date, um, but certainly throughout the year, we can do two hundred seventy-fifth somethings.
Well, they, they had the State House anniversary, and they did a little bit of it, like, every couple of months, so it doesn't have to be all done at one time.
Okay. That's good news. Um, so I, I think the license plate idea is great. We'll have to get a committee together to draft Bob to write that letter before he no longer is a state rep, so he has the pull he has to try and get that to happen. Um, we'll work with the town manager and see if we can get folks like, uh, Mac Asperius assigned to, I I think he'll wanna do that, um.
He volunteered.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Okay, great. So, I mean, that's, he he's got the energy and the drive to help push this whole thing, so I'm, I'm excited that he's volunteering.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, he does. I volunteered him for him.
Okay, well, that probably puts you on the committee too then, Paul. Thank you very much.
That's fine.
But, uh, so anyway, is there, are there anything else that you would suggest, or you want to see us try and do at this point? Uh, Bob?
No, I I think you arrived on a good start. Like I said, the thing that's gonna be time sensitive is the license plate. Getting, if you are gonna go that route, getting a vendor to manufacture them and so on and so forth, because, you know.
Do you have any concept of cost factors in that, or?
I have absolutely no idea. It might be in the records that Paul says he has in the audit files somewhere.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know where they came from. I don't know how much they cost or anything like that. I don't know, I don't know where they came from, I don't know how much they cost or anything like that to make. I think they were selling them for ten, either ten or twenty dollars.
I, I asked uh, I asked one of the uh, I asked, actually asked Sharon to pull that file and we'll get on that right away. We'll get those license plates and get on that right away.
Let me know if you ever want me to send with you.
We will, we will, trust me.
That's what I'm afraid of.
So, Bob, I'm gonna kind of ask you to, to start. Putting together thoughts on that letter and maybe getting some of the other reps to help sign on with you to be able to send that to.
The letter, the letter is all done. The letter is all done.
Okay, so you just need to get a signature on it and ship it?
No, I, I only use my signature on it, that'd be okay from you folks. But it's the same letters you have there, all I gotta do is change the names on it.
Okay.
Now, as far as.
All right.
As far as the, you know, the delegation at that time. Uh, you'll have to find, you know, whoever the state rep at that time, they can uh. Get a house proclamation, they can get a senate proclamation and a governor proclamation, that type of stuff, you know. But uh, you know, but between now and December.
I know I'm not gonna remember that come next month, so if you could help us to remember that as well. Uh, when you drop into the committee or something like that. Nancy, you were saying something, I didn't hear it.
He's gonna be a member of the committee so he can guide us.
Right, I, I, I got that part. Barbara, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, you can go ahead and let Matt know to contact me as well. Um, and I'll be the liaison right now for the Heritage Commission while they're still going through their reorganizing organization.
And I hope these are live, I hope these are live meetings, none of this stuff.
Well, this Zoom stuff, we really appreciate your, your presence here today, uh Bob, I, I. Was under the impression you might not be able to make it, so I'm glad you could and uh thank you for.
I, I, I got a broken left arm thanks to Bill.
Okay, Bill, it's your fault.
I'll be getting you at the Pedic bill soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot, bye, Bob.
I think we have a, I think we have a good idea what the council's looking for and we'll get something together in the next week or two and start the process.
Okay, good. Be good to see that move forward because we don't have any more time than we think we. To uh get motion, okay? So that brings us to um minutes. And we have two sets of minutes tonight for July twenty-third and August sixth, and I'll have to admit, I didn't have a chance to get through both of them. Um, but Peter?
Well, this is a momentous occasion because I have found a uh. And would like to make a correction in the minutes, I believe this is my first, so I'd ask you all.
Are you gonna, are you gonna move the minutes first?
Uh, well, we could do that too.
Well, we need a motion for the minutes to accept the minutes of July twenty-third.
So move this, Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by Bill to accept the minutes of July twenty-third. Peter, you're second in it and you had corrections?
Uh, yes.
So excited.
I'd ask my fellow counselors to refer to page six, line five. Where it says Counselor Albert expresses his disappointment. And I believe my feeling at the time was disappointment and that would be the correct word.
Okay, hold on, I have no pages online.
These pages aren't numbered for some reason.
That was one of my corrections is we need to add page numbers.
Okay, I found page six. What, what are we talking about?
Line five.
Line five is blank on my page six.
Uh, line four is blank on mine.
Line seven, okay?
It's there, oh, I found another problem. They're off, they're off on the li- the alignment. So I'll say page, it'll be line.
So you're talking about you're expressing disappointment instead of disappointed?
Yes, and I distinctly recall I was disappoint, there was disappointment.
Mr. Chairman, it's gonna be page seven, line five.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on. So it's page six.
Page six.
No, it's not, you gotta count the first page.
Gotta count the first page.
Good job, Peter, for your first try.
Well, that was a bust.
Does anybody else have any corrections to the? I'm sorry, look. Barbara?
Yeah, add, add the page numbers and um also on page two. Line forty-four, Litter Crew, Litter Crew needs to be capitalized.
Because that's their name, Litter Crew?
The name of the group, yep. And. On the last page, line seven, no, I'm sorry, eight. Um, there's a space there where it says motion carried, it's like double spaced, it should only be single spaced.
On the same line.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, can anybody else have any corrections? Can I refer you to the page, it's gonna be, I think, number five? Where there's multiple motions in the middle of the page from eighteen to twenty-seven or something like that. And I think we have some confusion over what exactly happened there. Hopefully, the meeting wasn't that confused. But at the top of the page, on line four, it talks about a motion by Counselor Albert, seconded by Counselor Harrington. To move the proposed ordinance ahead with the addition of the wording regarding resident-only parking. Um, and then we talked about whether we would do that or not, uh and the next, at line eighteen, it just, it. Without any vote, it talks about a motion made by Chairman Canning and seconded by Counselor Albert calling for the guest parking addition. And that motion failed one-six-zero with Counselor Albert for the motion. You know, I'm terribly confused by all this because I don't recall making a motion. I know Counselor Albert had made a motion. We called the question and it voted down, so. Can somebody help me out or should we go back to figure out how to, how to word that?
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I think if, if it's true that, that Pete called the question. I would completely get rid of all the boldface, delete everything from motion to seconded by. And just have it read Counselor Albert called, called, called the vote for guest part, for the guest parking addition and then you get the motion failed. That would make sense.
It would, thank you. And, and I'm okay with that. Um, so then it says the motion was made by Counselor. By Vice Chair Boyd and seconded by Counselor Harrington to move um this forward. But to amend the resident-only ordinance to be effective May fifteenth to September fifteenth. Um, clarification questions were asked and that motion carried seven-zero-zero.
Correct.
I think there was a previous difference in time, wasn't there?
No, so it was back to back to back. You, you had, you had, you had Counselor Albert's motion. Question was called, the motion failed, and I made the motion which was seconded by, by Nancy. To do the May fifteenth to October, to, to September fifteenth piece. That was the only part of the vote, there was no discussion, it was just, it was amending. It was proposed language, amending the ordinance to include, to be date-specific. That vote was taken, that vote passed, then the question was, then the question came around in the circle.
Before you go further, but listen back up, that wasn't a motion to move it forward but to amend, that was a motion to amend.
Correct.
Right?
That's correct.
So, so we can drop the to move it forward? But, and then just say it's a motion to amend, the resident-only ordinance to be effective?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct, yes.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes. And then, and then that changed.
And the following motion.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I know, you, that, the following motion bring, it, it brings everything full circle, it, it links it all together, so it makes sense.
Right, so the following motion was to move it to a third reading and that passed six-one-zero with Counselor Rothaus opposed.
Correct.
That, that's as far as I got and was so confused, I didn't know how to even mark it up, so. I don't have anything else to add to these minutes because I didn't get through them any further than that. If there's no other changes, if we're comfortable with the changes we made, Paul, do you think that was clear enough that we can make those changes?
Uh, yeah, we'll just have to have Becky review what we just talked about with uh, with everything, because it's kind of hard for me. Not having in front of me to write all this stuff down, so we'll, we'll get them done, we're good.
And why don't you have them in, never mind. Thank you, Paul, for being with us, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you for doing it virtually.
So, are there any other comments on these minutes? Peter?
I'm mute. Not on these particular minutes, but the keeping of minutes in general.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's some RSA that requires that we have to have them in writing as opposed to. There are all these meetings are saved off and, and recorded for posterity. I'm not sure at this point why we, we go through this process.
Because we are, keep them in writing and they have to be filed with the town clerk and, and la da 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 da. It's, it's part of the legal requirements of public meetings.
Yeah, there's RSA that govern minutes and everything with the meeting.
Yeah, I, you know, it just seems like everything's saved off forever now on the internet, so.
Maybe, but we can't guarantee that. Can't guarantee these will be safe forever either, but we, we're gonna make an effort to do so. Um, if, if there are no other questions and we're comfortable with the changes that we've made, I'll call for a vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Um, yes, Finley?
Yes.
Uh, Lon?
Woods, Jerry.
Peter?
Yes.
And Barbara?
Yes.
And Bill?
Boyd, aye.
You guys, you, you guys all shuffled around in my screen here, so I just go left to right, bottom to top, so you're, you're last now, Bill, sorry about that.
Told you, I'm always gonna skip that.
Brings us to the minutes of August sixth, uh town council, special town council meeting minutes, which are twenty-six pages long. And I didn't have a chance to go through them, so somebody else will have to proceed here. Finley?
The only, the only thing that jumped right out, Matt, jumped right out at me was on.
Are you making a motion to accept?
Oh, I'll move to accept the minutes.
Motion was made by Finley and seconded by whom? I didn't see anybody. Lon actually said the words, but, okay, I just didn't see and hear at the same time, sorry. So made by Finley and, and seconded by Lon. Finley, you had corrections?
Well, the, the, the one that jumped right out at me was page fifteen, line twenty-two. And um it says Chief Roy indicated he does, and she's very obviously not a he. At least, I think.
So it would be she does. Okay, anybody else have corrections to the minutes of uh August sixth? Barbara?
Yeah, on page one, line thirty-three, lions.
Yeah.
L I.
It's a real lion, not a.
Not a.
Not, not a, a name of an individual. It's L I O N I, I N, S R S, okay. Anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, just um on pa- on page four, line sixteen. Just to miss all the fine to have his name correctly spelled. With the D, and he lives at Lin Danway, not Lin Dinway.
And L I N D A N?
D E N.
E N, Lin Dinway, okay. Anything else? See, then, anybody else have any, any suggestions for these minutes? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting the minutes with corrections, signify by saying aye. Um, roll call, Nancy?
Yes.
Um, I'm abstaining. Uh, Finley?
Yes.
Lon?
Woods, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
That was just to confuse everybody. Barbara?
Yes.
So that passes six-zero-one with myself abstaining, uh because I didn't get a chance to read through them, and I apologize for that. Um, which brings us to comments from the press. I'm, I'm sure the press is not interested at this point. I don't see anybody raising their hand and nobody screamed or yelled at me. Um. Uh, comments from the public, obviously, the same thing. Nobody's dialed in, hopefully they were aware that they needed to hurry up and dial in if they heard it coming. We'll give them a few seconds, um or come back to them. If somebody from the public wants to make comments, please dial in to the numbers on the screen. And click star nine to raise your hand. Um, meanwhile, comments from the council. Anybody have any comments they'd like to add at the end here? Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Paul brought up uh during town, the town manager's report. On some of the changes that the planning board will be discussing on September first and. Um, I would encourage my colleagues to really take a look at what's being discussed. Um, one of the things that I had advocated a long, a long time ago that's coming to fruition is to actually have some. Some rules in our ordinances as it relates to uh cell towers, telecommunita- telecommunications poles in our community. I think, I think what Tim has proposed addresses, addresses, um, addresses the issue that. Our community has been facing regarding height and it gives the, it gives the town, the town planners and the Z B A. Uh, a good set of guidelines to work, which I encourage them to take a look at that particular chapter. Uh, but the other one that's being bandied by is, uh, they're proposing some specific rules regarding. The, the usage and storage of fifth wheels, travel trailers, campers, uh being utilized on people's properties, there's some. Changes that are being proposed that the planning board are gonna be looked at, be looking at. Um, that I'm sure might raise an eyebrow for some members of the community, so I would. Um, if you, if you have, I know we all have busy lives this weekend, um if you should take the opportunity to, to, to read and take a look at it. Um, any feedback, if you could provide, provide me some feedback so that I'm prepared uh for my meeting on Tuesday. Um, so that I can best represent how the council, how individual councils might be feeling, thinking about it, I, I certainly would appreciate it. So, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have comments from the council?
You've all done very well. Do it, Jared.
I want to thank everybody for dealing with the uh virtualization tonight so that I could participate. Um, I know it's not the, the best thing in the world, but uh I appreciate it, thank you.
And we thank you very much for taking your time and uh I see it's nice and dark there now in your background. Um, on your vacation, yes, I'm, I'm sure you couldn't think of anything better to do at this point. Appreciate you keeping any beer off of the camera. And uh wish you the rest, best and the rest of your vacation. Thanks for your, your input. Um, from a PSA perspective, I want to continue to, to reach out to the people of the town of Merrimack. To uh urge you to continue to be cautious about COVID nineteen, it's not gone away. Um, it is reduced, uh at least in, in Merrimack and in the area, uh hopefully in New Hampshire. Um, and it continues that way, but as school opens up, uh we've already seen problems with uh. Colleges where students coming back, there've been some outbreaks in various different areas. Um, so we still need to be cautious, we still need to be aware. Uh, mask, as we talked about earlier with respect to voting, uh may or may not help. I don't know the answer to that, but I do know that it makes people feel more comfortable if you have a mask so that they aren't breathing in whatever you're exhaling. Um, and I feel better personally wearing a mask because it helps me to make sure I'm not uh. Spreading it more than I have to, although I'm confident I'm not sick at the moment. Uh, but I won't know in the future because I do have to interact with people. Um, and I try to keep six feet apart, I try to wear my mask and uh I hope that you do as well, so those. People that are coming to vote. people that are coming to vote, we're doing everything we can to be cautious, to be careful. Uh, for not only the voters, but the people that are working those polls. Those are your neighbors. Uh, people from Merrimack that are volunteering or they're spending their time. Some of them are paid for their time on a minimum wage-type basis. Uh, but it's still effectively a volunteer of their day to be out there to help you to be able to vote. So be respectful and please and, and understand that everybody's doing their best with all of this. And, uh, especially folks like Lynn who have put in tremendous number of hours with getting these elections ready. Um, we appreciate the work that Lynn and Diane and our town clerk do to, to make all this happen and all the other people that are associated with that. Um, with that, I don't have anything particular to add. Uh, just stay safe and, and be warm and comfortable and uh, we'll talk to you guys next time we're in a council meeting. Is that good? Anybody else have anything else? I think Lon, you were gonna make a motion to adjourn?
I did.
Did? And did somebody second that? Seconded by, was that Finley raising your arm or?
No.
Your off. Uh?
It was Peter.
Peter. Seconded by Peter. So motion to adjourn by Lon, seconded by Peter. Uh, by roll call, Nancy?
Yes.
Um, yes, uh, Finley?
Yes.
Lon?
What's Jerry?
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
And Bill?
Boy, aye.
So that passes seven-zero-zero. I wanna point out that it's nine fifty-two. We beat the ten o'clock uh, perp you and we're happy about that.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning. I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the town clerk tax collector for the town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.